We're going to go ahead and call this Monday, January 11th, meeting of the Placerville City Council's order. Will everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for joining us here for a special meeting on a Monday afternoon. And Happy New Year to everybody. It's been a wild 2021 already, so we're continuing in the tradition of 2020 so far. So let's go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Mayor Sarah Joseph.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Okay, we're have a forum established. Moving on to item three, any announcements or presentations to the public, Mr. Morris. Oh, clear on.
Yeah, none that I have for today, Mayor, unless any of the council have any announcements they'd like to make.
Council. Okay, seen none. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Move for adoption.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay, seen none. We'll move right along into item 5.1. Or, excuse me, item five, discussion items and item 5.1, which is consider an appeal filed by Mark Acuna for the Planning Commission's November 17th, 2020 approval of conditional use permit 20-06. And then affirm the Planning Commission's decision denying the appeal to allow the establishment of a place of entertainment on the first floor at 301 Main Street. And Mr. Rivas has this item for us this afternoon.
Before you get started, Mayor, may I make a statement real quick?
Yes.
Okay, I will, I will be recusing myself on items 5.1 and 5.2, both. The front 5.1 I'm refusing because of the proximity and the potential effect on my business parking. And on 5.2, I'm refusing myself because they're literally right next to my business. So I will be signing off at this time, maybe talking on this issue a little bit later, but I wish you all the best and we'll be, we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Hey. With that, we will go over to Mr. Rivas for the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is an appeal of a conditional use permit to allow for a place of entertainment or what staff is calling the Herick Building Assembly Hall. And so the appellant has challenged the approval of the Planning Commission on basically two main points. One, the change in use on the ground floor from retail to a private event center triggers the need for a parking survey and the potential assessment of parking in Lufi's in accordance with section 10-4-5 of the city code. So parking requirements are determined by, by the city code section 10-4-4, that's the parking and loading section, subsection E, and it provides the minimum parking stalls required to serve various land uses or buildings as listed. So the applicant is requesting 100-person maximum occupancy. And the number of parking stalls for that would require 25 for the proposed use when calculated on a gross basis. So the subject space has been used historically for both retail and as a restaurant. The building most prominently was used as the Zo's Restaurant and then Sarah's Cafe. The building, at the time that it was assessed for parking assessment district number one, was basically one space for four seats per the section of the code. And just, and just for reference, the city code regarding parking is the same today as it was back in the early 80s when the assessment was first levied on, on the various properties within the parking district. So the parking requirement for a place of entertainment or assembly hall is the same requirement as it is for a restaurant, which is four seats per person. Since the footprint of the use within the existing building is the same, staff had determined that a substantive change in building occupancy or land did not trigger any additional parking requirements, thus triggering the parking in Lufi ordinance. As of just last Friday, following the preparation of the staff report, staff was able to obtain the files related to the downtown parking district that created and funded the parking garage. And we found the engineer's report that was prepared for parking district number one dated February the 25th of 1982. And within that report, we have a copy of what's called the method of spreading assessments. And I'm going to read that because this is where there's kind of some issue regarding how we interpret that. So basically it states.
Pierre, I was just, I was just going to ask if, is there, and are you going to be reading it? Is there, do you have it on your computer too? I was just wondering if we could share that so people could see it as well, if possible.
Pull that up, yeah. Okay, are you able, council members, can you see the screen?
I can.
We can.
So it's very short and I'll read it through and I'll try and explain where some of the, where we're having issue is how to interpret this, but this is the method of spreading assessments. So just reading from the top, the assessments have been spread over the various parcels of land within the assessment district boundaries as follows. One half of the total project cost is apportioned to the various parcels on the basis of land area. The other one half of the total project cost is apportioned to the various parcels on the basis of gross floor area. Gross floor area is defined as the total floor area of a building, including basements, mezzanines, and upper floors. All parcels of land within the assessment district are zoned commercial and are equally assessed on parcel land area. Parcels having existing parking, which meets the city of Placerville's onsite parking standards, are credited with a reduction in their assessment on gross floor area amount based on a ratio of parking provided over required parking. Required parking was calculated using the standard established in section 10-4-4E, which is the same then as it is now, of the Placerville city code for each business or use. The credit for providing onsite parking was re-spread based on the gross floor area to the parcels which do not provide onsite parking. So the issue we're having here is the applicant would like to have a total occupancy of 100. So with an occupancy of 100, that equates to 23 parking spaces. When we found the listing of how many parking spaces were allocated, they were allocated to what was once a single assessor's parcel number. So the 23 parking spots were allocated for both Zo's and the Hangman's Tree Bar in Saloon. So if they're looking at 100 parking spaces, the current occupancy for the Hangman's Tree Ice Cream Saloon is 45. So that brings us down to then an occupancy of 55 that would be left to attribute to Zo's. But the question that we have then is, do we have the ability at this juncture to look specifically at the requirements of the parking for each use versus an interpretation of what's on your screen, the method of spreading assessments, where it appears to have been done on a basis of a gross floor area of commercial. So there wasn't a differentiation between land uses. The differentiation between land uses didn't come into play until they were seeking a credit for those parcels that already had onsite parking. And again, and I apologize to the council, we've just, since we just received this information Friday, we're at a scramble trying to come up with the correct interpretation. Historically, staff had always been under the impression that unless there was an expansion physically to the building or a substantive change to the use whereby it was a substantial increase in parking requirements, we would not attribute any additional parking requirements on that use. So in the case of 301 Main Street and 305 Main Street, they essentially stayed the same. The ice cream would have the same parking, parking requirements as the bar. And 301 Main Street, as the Assembly Hall, would have the same parking requirements as it would have when it was Zo's Cafe or when it was Sarah's Cafe. It's basically, and it'd be one parking space for, for four seats or for, for persons. So I don't know if we want to discuss this any further, but this is sort of an issue that unfortunately staff has not fully completed its evaluation of what is applicable here, what, what this meant without really digging deeper into the files to really determine how it was done.
Pierre, if I might interrupt.
Go ahead, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you. Sorry, I can't get my picture back. You're probably better off without it anyways. I think Pierre's explanation of this is pretty accurate from what I can tell. He just got me this language that he read probably five minutes before the council meeting started. And when I first read it, I had one interpretation of it. I read it again. I had another, and now I'm back to my original interpretation. And I have to caution you because normally what you will see in these engineering reports when they're talking about spreading assessments, you will see an example. This is how it was calculated on a certain parcel and it would give you the background as to how they did this. What is confusing is the language in here talking about use and, and the fact that they used the use or the business in calculating some of the assessments. But first part's very clear, just Pierre said, half of the assessment for each parcel was predicated upon the size of the land, the other half on the size of the building. And where it gets confusing is when we start getting into this credit. And what I'm seeing here, absent any other explanation, and I'm not saying that there couldn't be one, is that each parcel was assessed, half of their assessment was made up based on the size of the land, the other half on their floor area. However, they got credit for existing parking. And when they did that, they looked at their use, they looked at the parking requirements for that particular use and they predicated or based the assessment based on, or their credit rather, based upon whether they met their use or not. So if they only met half of the required use, then they didn't get a full credit. If they met all of it, then they got a much larger credit, obviously. So I think Pierre and council, what this language is that was confusing is when they talk about required parking was calculated using the standards established city code section for each business or use, they're referring to what the required parking was in order to determine the ratio of their existing parking to required parking and figure out the amount of the credit. So I think that Pierre's analysis is correct at this point, based on what I see here, without any other information available to us right now. So like, summarize, what's that mean? It means that if a parcel is in this district, then they do not have to pay an assessment or a greater amount, let's say, parking in Lufi because they've changed their loot, changed their use. We have a parking in Lufi ordinance that becomes applicable when you construct a new building within this district or you expand your existing facility. So I'm not sure that this would trigger, the application would trigger a demand for additional parking fees.
And as staff indicated in the, in your staff report, it was staff's interpretation that, that this conditional use permit and the proposed Assembly Hall would indeed not trigger the need for any additional parking, not triggering the traffic, the parking in Lufi. So unless we want to discuss the, the parking situation further, I'll go on to the second bullet in the, in the appeal.
Councilmember No.
I have a question about the math we just did because you said originally they paid for 23 parking spots. Then with 100 people plus staff, that is 25 plus spots. And that does not include the, what the ice cream bar, because back when the 23 spots were evaluated, it was for both buildings. And we're just talking about one building here. And so just for the one building, it seems like it would be two to three more spots, two more spots going to the 25 plus staff. And then we have the other buildings, so we're not doing an apples to apples comparison.
Well, unfortunately, the way it was, the way the assessment was apportioned was on a parcel by parcel basis. And so rather than building by building basis or use by use. And so when it was, when the 23 spaces were allocated, it was allocated to both Zo's and the Hangman's Tree Bar. So if, if our interpretation was different, if we were looking at, indeed it was based on the use and that they would be, that this would trigger the parking in Lufi, we could just simply take the occupancy of 100 and then minus the 45 that they have allocated, that's the occupancy for the ice cream saloon. So that's, that's 55 persons. So if you take 55 persons, divide that by four, that gives you then 14 additional spaces that were, that would be required if this application triggered the parking in Lufi.
Any other questions at this point? I guess, Councilmember Borelli.
You talked about the usage not changing and I really, really disagree with that. And I, because I think changing from a restaurant to an assembly hall is quite a difference. And so I'm questioning that.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, to answer Councilmember Borelli's question, there is no, there's no difference in the parking requirements. It's based on, on either a per person or, or per seating basis. So it's, it's one parking stall per four seats or per four persons, regardless of whether it's a restaurant or an assembly hall, it's the same parking requirement. It's not a different ratio or a higher ratio.
I understand that, but you said that what would trigger it would be if there was something new added, new, you indicated, I guess, structure, building structure would be considered. I mean, if they added 10 feet or whatever, but I guess I'm thinking of it in a different way. I think this does kind of indicate that they, they are changing the usage of it and it's changing the structure.
Mr. Mayor, if I could maybe clarify, they are changing the use, Councilmember Borelli, but that is different than changing, like I say, the original calculation, which was based on floor space of the buildings. They're not changing the floor space. They are changing the use. And I believe Pierre, if you can add into that, that's the reason for the conditional use permit is they're changing from a retail use to an assembly use. And we don't, we're not disputing that. We're agreeing with you that there is a change of use. But that does not necessarily, under the interpretation of how the parking district was originally established and paid for, that it was not based on use at that time. It was based on building square foot area.
Yes, that is absolutely correct. We are, we are here because a, a conditional use permit is before us, meaning that a place of entertainment or an assembly hall triggers a conditional use permit.
So could I ask then, for instance, the IOOF Hall and their upstairs where they have the dances, et cetera, et cetera, I know that that probably, how is, have, have you looked in or can you tell us how their, their usage is calculated? Is it the same? Are we talking about the same thing? Or I don't think it's oranges and apples. I think it's the same. It's a hall. And, and the same way with the, the IOOF Hall, the, let's see, there's, there were two or three that were, use their upstairs for dances and, you know, and they have kitchens, et cetera, et cetera.
I don't, I don't know what offhand the occupancy would be, but let's just say it has a 100-person occupancy. Then we would just take the 100, divide by four, and that would give us the required parking. However, when the assessments were done for the parking district, the way that method of spread is read leads us to believe that it was based on just a gross square footage of total square footage of the building and not on the use. But the use comes into play when there's existing parking on the lot so that we could allocate then a credit to the assessment that they were going to have to pay.
Pierre, is there, is there an example of somebody on Main Street that had, would that be like, I'm trying to think of who has existing parking, maybe the hardware store behind, behind the building or, I mean, would they have been someone that, that would have gotten credit? I'm just trying to think of where that example even manifests in terms of the credits. Not that it maybe is germane to this, but maybe it would help to clarify the situation.
Yes, I would, I would agree. That probably is one example where the owner would have sought credit for that existing parking onsite.
Councilmember No, I saw you had.
I'm looking at one of those sheets right now. I don't know if you can see, but for example, the Shell Station got a credit of 14 spaces for all their spacing because they have their own. So there, there were several examples, the Shell Station VIPs, PT&amp;T, the Arco Station, Mobile Station, all had credits with their, their parking.
Councilmember Taylor. Oh, you're mute.
Gets me at least one time every. Question for Pierre, this number of 100 occupants plus staff. There is like a hard number in terms of occupancy that's based on use and square footage that, you know, the fire department comes up with and verifies that includes staff. Do we know what that number, like the absolute number is for this case?
Yes, the absolute number for this space is one calculated at 100.
Okay.
So it's 89, 89 persons for just the overall hall area. And then you had 10 persons allocated to the stage, one person allocated for the worming kitchen.
Okay. So it's safe to assume that, you know, we're not going to be surprised with events that are 200 people. 100 is the number that it will be.
They, yes, yes, they would exceed the, the building occupancy requirements.
Okay.
You have fire violation as well.
And that's inclusive of staff?
That 100 is including the entirety of the space.
Yeah. Okay, Pierre, one of, I know we kind of did a segue, but if you had more of your presentation you wanted to go through?
Yes, so that, so moving on to the second issue, and I'll read that. The, the change in use to an event center will remove important retail space from its historic first floor use impacting the downtown district with reduced foot track, traffic and retail sales. So this, this concern regarding the change in use from retail to office space or some other non, what we'd call foot traffic accommodating use has come up many times in the past with the Planning Commission and the city council. The concern being the loss of foot traffic and subsequent, subsequent loss of retail sales tax dollars. Staff, staff at this point would have no basis to restrict the use on the first floor of the building on Main Street, absent a more definitive zoning code rate regulation. So a place of entertainment is a use that is permitted by conditional use permit in the central business district zone. So staff would also opine that the use of the space for various types of entertainment, such as mixers, renting for wedding receptions, parties, or for music venues and theater, would actually bring additional foot traffic to the downtown area. There's been much, much debate and discussion over the years of the conversion of the Empire Theater that went from, from a theater to retail space. And it's always been the desire of the city that maybe that could go back to a theater, thus bringing back that additional foot traffic. And the square footage in the Empire Theater is probably more than double that of the Herick Building. So, so I think it's clearly regarded that, that a theater use or entertainment type of venue actually can enhance and bring more people downtown to the area and make it more vibrant. So staff would recommend that if the council does desire to control and regulate commercial land uses, say, within the first floor of buildings located within the central business district, that that, that that discussion should occur independently with this land use application. So that really is concluding staff's report. Our recommendation is that the city council would affirm the decision of the Planning Commission approving conditional use permit 20-06 to allow a place of entertainment, allowing the Assembly Hall on the first floor at 301 Main, based on the findings made by the Planning Commission and deny the appeal. And with that, I just have one cleanup item, if, if the council wouldn't mind, on page four of your staff report. And moving then to proposed condition of approval number 11. That condition is regards to outdoor amplification of music. Basically, it states no outdoor amplification of sound is permitted. And the second sentence is operation of the facility, regardless of the hours permitted to be open to the public. Just strike that sentence in its entirety. And that's the only change in that condition. The rest of it reads interior sound applications shall be directed away from the principal entrance and directed towards the interior of the facility. So with that, this concludes staff's report. I'll answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Rivas. And yeah, that's probably another agenda item, outdoor amplification.
Yes.
We'll go there at some other time. All right, council members, any other questions at this point for Mr. Rivas? Councilmember Borelli.
Okay, so I am reading the report. I'm, I'm questioning conditions and that, that this, that it was not placed as a condition, but I'm questioning that has been brought up, and I think it's a legitimate one, that are we going to, are these folks going to be allowed to have, say, up to 100 people in there? For instance, at the same time that when we start getting the parking back for the courthouse, say, and the garage is loaded with potential jurors, et cetera. And if you remember back, we've had tons of complaints from downtown business owners saying that their customers cannot park on the downtown, in the downstairs area of the garage due to the overflow from the courthouse. So if, say, they, these folks had scheduled a morning meeting, a breakfast meeting, et cetera. So we've got double the amount of traffic. And I'm also questioning what if they schedule some sort of occupancy during, say, Apple Hill on the weekend, during Apple Hill season? And you know what we are putting up with, with that already. So now we've got another double whammy. I noticed in their report that they're saying that the, they're figuring that the majority of their functions would be in the evening. But there's no, there's nothing guaranteeing that. And I am just quite frequently looking for. And I am just quite frankly looking forward to many, many complaints from the business owners that really come forward after the fact. And I just think that we need to project and start thinking of these things and maybe put some conditions on what the hours that these folks are allowed to operate or have a large gathering. And maybe the numbers could be smaller in the daytime. I don't know. I don't, I'm not. What I'm looking for is avoiding future, you know, a complaint like we've had. And all of you are very well aware of the folks downtown complaining. And it's always surrounding parking, and I think we're just laying ourselves wide open for more. I have nothing, I, I, I have nothing against the venue, but I think there should be some conditions imposed.
Councilmember No.
Still struggling with the parking. So what we're saying is in 1982, 39 years ago, they assessed the parking, they built the garage. And because of what they did, we can never look at the parking again, is what it kind of sounds like to me, what we're saying. And, and the issue I have is, is not 301. It's multiple businesses I've heard that want to expand their capacity. They want to run bigger venues. And if we're not going to address that we're increasing the need for parking, how are we going to deal with that? Are we just going to have to do a reassessment and build a bit bigger parking garage? I mean, how are we going to address this increased need for parking based on these growing venues? That's it. That's my question.
Thank you, Councilmember No. Staff, any comments at this point in terms of the, sort of the, the idea that, you know, when this was passed, that it's not something that can be looked at again, or at least maybe not in the context of this particular item?
Right, it does appear that basically what we have is we had the existing properties that were assessed in that parking district number one. They were, again, based on their, their land area and based on the gross square footage of the existing buildings. Then they paid for the parking garage. I've heard for many years that the city would like to build a second parking garage. I know a location was there in the, in the T-Troll lot next to the post office. We were looking at putting a multi-story parking structure in that location. That probably would, would have to require the creation of a new parking district and a new assessment to pay for that parking garage. But I think is, Councilmember No is saying that it does appear that the way the, the parking was allocated at that time in that 1982 engineering report is that it was just based on square, commercial square footage. And it doesn't get into an actual determination of required parking based on use until they were actually looking at the credit for existing parking that may have existed on, on those lots, such as Councilmember No pointed out, the Shell station and probably a number of others that had onsite parking. Then that credit was basically due to the parking that they had based on that use. So sort of a loss here really to give any substantive recommendations on what to do in this situation. And then it does appear that the parking ratios for the restaurant and for the Assembly Hall are the same. And they have not expanded their facility or increased the square footage of their building at this time that would trigger the in-lu fee.
Councilmember Borelli.
So getting back to usage. My experience being in the restaurant business, and I know Kara can back me up on this, that when you have a restaurant, you're, you figure on your, a turnover. And I don't know what, what it is now. I don't know if it's every 45 minutes or hour or what. But that means that those parking spaces that we're talking about would be turned over. If, if they, if for an assembly, if they schedule, say, a wedding reception or something, you can figure that's going to last probably over two hours, maybe three, four, five hours. I don't know. But that means that those cars are going to stay there. There's going to be no turnover. So I really do think that, and I know Pierre, I, we're not questioning you. We're questioning what, what happened, you know, in 1982. But I really think usage really should be considered. And if we need to establish some new regulations or whatever, I, I think we really need to look at it. Because as Jackie said, you know, there's, I'm hearing of other places that want to, you know, expand for usage such as receptions, et cetera. So I, I don't know. I, I just think usage needs to be considered. The side question too, Pierre, when you're talking about the usage for the 100 people, and I'm, I think, I just don't think I'm understanding. So at the same time, the ice cream parlor is going to be operating. So those two combination, then they're allowed, what is the ice cream parlor allowed?
Yeah, the ice cream parlor has an occupancy of 45 persons. That's the maximum occupancy under the building code. But typically, it would be based, for, for that kind of a use, we would look at the number of seating. So it would be one parking stall per four seats. I don't know what the seating is.
So that for this particular thing, then, we're looking at any given time, 145 people can use that, those two parcels?
That's correct.
At the same time.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I have a, it's probably a question both for Pierre and for our city attorney. And, and that's, you know, as we look at this and, you know, the idea of going forward, you know, whether we were doing something different in terms of how we look at usage and the amount of cars that are being brought to downtown. Is there a, is there a prohibition? I mean, if, let's just say, for instance, we're going to have some kind of conditions on this with that, what the current ordinances preclude having some type of conditions on, on parking based on these 1982 calculations that were used for, for the, how parking stalls were allocated? Does that make sense? John, you're on mute.
Sorry. Pierre, did you want to take a shot at it first, or do you want me to?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and try, try and take a stab at it. So as far as the parking ratios per use, the parking ratios are the same today under current code as it was back in 1982. So I guess the, the main issue has to do with the maximum occupancy. So I don't know what that maximum occupancy is. I don't know what the maximum occupancy was at the time that it was those. I don't know if they had a seating capacity for 100 back then. I just know when it was Sarah's Cafe, they had a number of, of events that would take place. And there was a, it was a common music venue at the time, and they would have different kind of events in there. So it was a restaurant and also sort of an, an event place. But again, I don't know what, you know, what was the maximum number of people in there. The maximum being applied for is 100, and that's based on the maximum occupancy under the building code. Whether or not they'll have 100 people in there is, is something that we don't know. But they would be permitted under, under the building regulations to go up to that amount. But there's, it's not to say that you couldn't limit then the occupancy based on something, but something rational that you could say that, well, for these reasons, we're going to lower that occupancy down from 100 to say, maybe something you feel more manageable. But I would, I would, I'd recommend that maybe you would want to have the applicant speak to that issue as well.
Yeah, and I, I pretty much agree with what Pierre just said. I mean, there's two issues that when you start talking about parking. One is, can you acquire a parking in Lufi because they don't have sufficient parking? And I don't think we can. I don't think this qualifies to meet the criteria for charging that. But because you're dealing with a conditional use permit, and you're dealing for what's in the best interest of the community in order to make the findings to support that, I think you can put some conditions which may be relating to occupancy for the number.
Thank you, John. And I saw Councilmember Taylor had her hand up.
Yes, if, you know, if we approved this and down the road we had, you know, major issues over and over again in terms of parking or, or any other issues with the venue that maybe wasn't complimentary to the rest of downtown, does the city, would the city have any recourse?
John, maybe you can help me with this, but I'll take a stab at it. I would think that there was a serious concern where the use became a nuisance. The city would always have the ability then under its police powers to take action, declaring the use of nuisance and then take action to scale it back.
And would, would parking issues be considered a nuisance? Would that fit into the definition of a nuisance?
That's, that's a tough one to answer. It could very well be under the right set of circumstances and the right set of facts. It could constitute a nuisance, but it would, would have to really depend upon the, the circumstances and facts specific to the situation. You also have the ability to review conditional use permit annually if you want to.
Or every five years or every two years or?
You can review them periodically. Once they're approved and granted, you can't, they cannot be taken away without a hearing, but you do have the ability to review them.
Great.
Councilmember No.
I want to piggyback on what Kara's saying when we're discussing use because this use currently does exist on Main Street. I know I read the applicant's application and they said that they were not competing with any businesses. I don't believe that to be a accurate statement. If you look across the street to the Carrie House, they have two separate venues, one indoor, one outdoor for weddings, music, and, and all these sorts of things. You go down the block to the Oddfellow Hall, they have two separate venues for that town hall. So we have multiple uses like this right now. So if we approve this as the sixth use of this on Main Street, I think we're going to have a hard time coming back and, and targeting this one building because this is already a use and competing on Main Street as it is. I mean, they're putting a competing use right across the street. And I'm opposed to that. I'm, I'm just worried about the parking situation.
Okay, any questions now? I don't want to get too far ahead as we still have to hear from both the applicant and the appellant. Okay, seen none, then we'll go ahead and have the appellant join us. Mr. Mark, are you?
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
We can. You're still.
Mr. Morris has me locked out.
I changed that. You should be able to come back. There we go.
We see you. But you're on mute now, though. There we go.
Clean, leave the buttons alone.
So we're going to do both 10 minutes for both the appellant and the applicant. We need more time, let me know and we, you know, we'll look at it. I know we have a full schedule.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council staff. A pleasure to see you this, this afternoon. Operating from a different side of the governmental process. I appreciate your taking your time and asking all these questions of staff. It allowed me to, excuse me, to make some changes to my presentation this afternoon. You, just as I have, received a great deal of important information at the last minute. And it, I think it definitely confirms my concern that the planning commission, while there were a couple of commissioners that understood the importance of this issue, they did not, the entire commission did not have what you have in front of you today. And in fact, as the appellant, I don't have some of what you have in front of you today as far as some of these calculations. But thanks to your in-depth question period, I have been able to do some additional new math trying to get a handle on this. Now, and first, let me state, I did have a nice presentation and I'm going to unfortunately probably merge away from that because the focus has obviously changed. Well, I want to be, make it clear to the public and the project proponents that I was very clear in what, under what right I filed this appeal. And based on the city attorney and staff's review at that time, under the city parking regulations 10 dash 4 dash 5, section C, when an application is made for an expansion of a use, the planning commission shall determine if a parking study is required. It is that verbiage that I based my reasonings for appeal. Because I do feel that, as you have heard, as Pierre has worked through the old numbers and the new numbers of occupancy, there is definitely a change in the proposed occupancy from, from when the 1982 assessments were done and even the current uses of the building. Please keep in mind that throughout my history here in Placerville, it was always the P and M market. And I will always think of it as that. And I've even seen pictures as the, as this issue has come up, back to gravel roads and it's still a market. So it has always been a market during the 1982 building, parking garage assessments. It was a market, or excuse me, it was a restaurant and a bar. Based on the information that staff has given you this afternoon, that was assessed for a total of 23 parking places for the entire building. And that's, let's not forget that there are also two upstairs suites that are currently underdeveloped. Using Pierre's formula, thankfully, which has not changed over the years, the 23 parking places would equate to a 92 total occupancy for both downstairs users. This information wasn't clear to me when I filed my appeal. It was obviously not available for the planning commission. So I have just done those figures this afternoon. And also a thanks to the council for their extensive, extensive questions. We know now that the proposed occupancy by the Taylors will be 145. Using the same mathematics, that equates to 36 parking places. So at the same disadvantage or advantage that you are this afternoon, that is, that would be my revised math on what was looked at back in 82, which was a highly controversial, controversial project, a lot of hearings. This building was assessed for 23 spaces, 92 occupants. Currently being requested 145 should equal 36. To go back to some of the other comments that I had is that this conditional use permit and its conditions of approval will run with the land. This will not be specific to the Taylors. Any future owner could still meet these requirements and adopt this same use. Converting spaces into event centers or satellite office spaces is currently a very popular use of commercial space. In 2019, there was a proposal to do the very same thing with the Inter County Title Building. It did have parking requirements that were very difficult to meet. That project did not move forward. But based on these facts, now is the time that this, the council does need to ensure that the impacts are being properly addressed. It's not fair to the applicant or the citizens to come back at a later date and say, gosh, we should have asked you to do this or that. And I do suggest that the impacts from an event center are different than the P and M market and the Hangry Street Bar. Assuming the event center is being run as a nonprofit operation. When considering the impact, one must assume the center will strive to have a full calendar of events booked. Under the current conditions of approval, these events can take place seven days a week at any time during the hours as desired by the, the applicant, or the, excuse me, the owners and the, the event supporters. The claim that a wedding reception or conference. The claim that a wedding reception or conference will not have an impact on our parking facilities, I'm afraid is false. Using the example of a wedding reception with 100 attendees beginning at 1:00 PM on a Saturday and ending at, say, 7:00 PM, I would suggest that would bring between 25 and 40 cars to the downtown parking district. And those cars would be parked for five to six hours during that event. I think we'd all agree that that's a very typical wedding. The same parking impacts could occur for conferences, theaters and music events. Again, I don't deny the applicant's right to change the venue, but there is a conversion of the use of the space significant from a market or a storefront to an center that sole purpose is to attract larger numbers of people. Of course, we would all hope that any of these attendees will leave the event center and shop or op, or eat on Main Street. I would suggest, however, that a high number of them will, will end up leaving. They'll have other family or business matters that they will need to attend to. And, and they'll also have the ability to use the warming kitchen facilities that will be a part of the event center venue. And to be honest, after a long wedding reception, which one of, which any of us hasn't wanted to just go home and relax. So the idea that there's this automatic wonderful segue into visiting downtown, I'm not sure that those numbers would be so high. A question that I have that had not seen addressed anywhere and will have a significant impact on the marketability of this proposed site is the use of alcoholic beverages onsite. I have no opposition to that, but I'm just curious. I know our own town hall, because we do not allow alcoholic beverages, fell far off the list of popularity and booking because that is an important part of celebrations. So I would ask you to please take a look at the, the conditions and the impacts as they are being applied by what I could do consider is a change in the use. Very quickly, I have set my second portioning of this, and that's the loss of the retail floor space. And I appreciate staff's candor in their recommendation. It was, just to read my own statement here, the project and the conditional use permit reminded me of the importance of the first floor retail uses in the central business district. The applicants have stated they think most events will be after hours. If this is true, closed doors and, and reduced contributions to the street will be the PNM market's place. Continuity of shops, foot traffic and the appeal of walking the block is key to any downtown. It's the creation of the energy or the vibe on the street that encourages the shopper to continue to go up and down and explore all the various stores that our downtown does have to offer. Unfortunately, if it is indeed closed during the day, that is something that we will lose. I have, in my past years, shared this concern with various people, with staff and council members. It is something that I think we need to take a look at and this use has no impact on this use. The use simply is, was just a trigger for me to say, wow, we really need to look at this. If we lose any more retail, it really loses the same connectivity storefront to storefront. For example, there's, you may not recall, but for years, we had a large number of law offices that operated on the first floor, taking up prime retail space. Well, fortunately, time has taken care of that and a number of those are now successful retail shops. So again, I would just concur with staff's report and ask the council to take the time to consider that as part of maybe a broader review of the, the central business district, the historic district, et cetera, and making sure that we don't lose any more first floor retail. I will be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for the appellant at this time from council? Okay, seen none. We'll go ahead, Mark. Have you hang on there?
Thank you.
And we will invite the applicant, Sue and Tim Taylor, for their presentation as well. Cleve, I'm not sure if you're the one letting them in. I see Sue. Oh, Sue, you're on mute still. There you go. Yep. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So unfortunately, you can't see stuff that I'm holding, but basically I submitted a floor plan. I mean, this is what I do for a living is I determine occupant loads on properties. So on our building, it's basically, assembly in this area is the, it's the same occupant load as if it was a restaurant. So it's, and actually with, from when it was assessed, we're actually down almost 200 square feet in the building because we added two ADA bathrooms in the hallway to those has taken out a lot of our floor print from when we were initially assessed on the parking. And another note, you might want to know that the theater, when it was approved during that time, actually had 585 seats in the theater that we're no longer using, that were also assessed during that time. So I'm a little caught off guard because, you know, 20 minutes before this meeting where they'd already determined that the, that this project doesn't trigger any requirements for additional parking. So I wasn't really worried about trying to figure out all these numbers and show you the calculations, but in the building code, and I guess, can you see that all? So that's the California Building Code. Under Assembly, Restaurant and Banquet Halls are exactly the same for occupant load. When you go to, this is the, the allowable occupant load is kind of highlighted down there. It's Assembly 2, which is 15 per. You, you figure out what the occupant, the square footage is and then you divide it by 15 and that's how you get your numbers. These numbers are regulated by the building department and the fire department. I have to do, you know, everything that they're requiring us to do is regulated under them and we're following the building and fire codes as we, you know, process through this. If we were doing a restaurant, which doesn't have any different impact, we wouldn't be coming before any board. It's, it would have been allowed by right. The only reason before, we're before these, the planning commission and the, and you is because we're trying to add entertainment to our already approved uses. There's numerous things that we can do by right on this property, again, that would not trigger me being here. And, and if we had done a restaurant, like I said, it wouldn't have been any different than what we're asking for now as far as parking goes. Or occupant load or the number of people in the building. So I'm not sure what else, you know, I think mainly the big concern was parking. I'm very conscious of that issue. We do have a two-hour parking limit that people are very conscious about. I think if, you know, Tim and I have, we do a lot of events downtown and we're very conscious of the parking during those times. So we would be aware and, you know, consider, we wouldn't, you know, plan a wedding during a Christmas parade, something. So, you know, we're, we're sensitive to the downtown. We are aware of those things and, and, and we don't want to make it difficult. You know, my, my vision is more like a dinner theater where you would have, you know, food catered from downtown and people could come and do some theater. We don't have any theater downtown. I hear it all the time. You know, everybody cries. I'm so sad about not having our Empire Theater. This kind of gives us an opportunity to do some fun things downtown and I, I don't know if Pierre got the picture of the inside of our building, but it would be really cool. I emailed it really early this morning. So it'd be kind of cool if you could show it to the city council and, because I don't have a way to do all that. And just, you know, when we saw how this building turned out and so many people are just in love with it and we thought it would be a neat way to share it is, you know, adding entertainment to the other things that we can do in there. So I really don't, you know, I feel like as far as what's required by law, we have followed all of the policies and requirements within your city codes. There's mechanisms that you determine these numbers and they were determined when we submitted our plans. And again, if I were to make this a restaurant, those numbers would not be any different. And actually, if you look at your parking requirements, the number four and number 12, again, you were not going to be able to, they are exactly the same. Same sentence. So you take the same number of people and you're going to have the same amount required for parking. I hope that kind of, and I did mention that we've deleted about, I'll, I'll put this up closer. So see that hashed out area and, I mean, this isn't a huge space that we're going to overwhelm. But right, all this area was taken out of the building that had been there before for the bathrooms. So, and then we're going to have the warming kitchens back here. And then this is, we've got columns that go down the center of this building, so it kind of limits a little bit of what we can do. And we're not going to, 100 is kind of your max so that you don't get in trouble from the fire department. But that's not going to be our go-to. You know, it's, it's going to be not so often that that number is hit. With tables and chairs, it's just kind of, but you want to stick to that so that if somebody comes in that, you're basically doing that for fire and building to make sure you don't go over your limits. But I'd say most of the time, people are not feeling those limits 100% of the time, if ever. You know, I, I just, it catches me when, because I have to follow rules and regulations and I have to follow policies when I'm doing projects and I have to go through government codes. In fact, I'm going to be sitting, representing an applicant tomorrow over these same kind of things. And I have to follow what's in the policies for the city, county or jurisdiction. And I feel like this project's done that. And so I don't know how, again, if we were not in, you know, adding some entertainment, we would not be having to do a conditional use permit. And that's really all I've got, unless you've got some questions.
Thank you, Sue. Council members, any questions for Sue at this point? Okay, seen none. Oh, council member, no.
I was wondering if you could answer Mark Acuna's question about the alcohol.
Um, you know, I'm waiting to see what happens with this permit to figure out what we do, but we're not, you know, that's something that, again, I have to go through the building department. Maybe there's a whole set of regulations and people that you have to work under to do all those things. So that's not, it's not like I can get this approval and then I get to go off and get a alcohol license, which, you know, if anybody knows me, I don't drink. But anyway, I don't know, you know, that's, that's depends on what you guys decide today, what we end up doing with the building.
Thank you.
Okay, Sue, go ahead and hang on there. We're going to go ahead then and move on to public comments. And for public comments, I know we have a lot of people, we're going to try to limit these to two minutes. I know it's a little bit shorter time, so if everyone could just really try to condense their, their time in. We have not only this, but we have another long hearing after this. So I'm going to do two minutes on public comments. And Cleve, are we?
Public comment is open for item 5.1. If you are joining by phone, please select star nine to indicate your desire to speak and you will be called upon when it's your turn. If you are joining by computer, select the raise hand option at the bottom of this screen. Please limit your comments to two minutes and voluntarily state your name for the record. You will be asked to unmute yourself before speaking. If you are joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak and you will be called upon. Using the last three digits of your phone number, please unmute yourself before pressing star six. So now taking public comment from Ruth Nicholson.
Good afternoon, Ruth.
Yeah, hello. Thank you. Good afternoon and Happy New Year. Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to address. Supervisor New, you had mentioned there was many other venues downtown in which the same events could be held. And I really questioned that. I've, I've tried twice to have big family events downtown and they didn't have a kitchen, a warming kitchen. The owners of those facilities weren't interested in renting out. So, or they weren't accessible because they were on the second story. I'm sorry. So I, I think it's a, it's a unique, it's a unique use. The other thing I wanted to mention was about parking. You know, I think what Supervisor Barelli, what you said, and Supervisor No, what you said, look, it was logical. I understand everything you said, but I don't think that there are the ordinances in place to address what you've brought up. And I do think that in the future, developing ordinances based on use would be warranted, but that's not in place now. And so I don't think the decision today can be based on something that's not in place. I mean, I could bring up something random and say, I don't like it because the applicant was wearing a green dress and I don't like green dresses. I mean, it's sort of, to me, the same. There's just nothing in place to regulate that. I think that's the main thing and you're trying to limit, limit the comments. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ruth.
All right, now sharing from five to five.
Hi, this is Leo Bennett-Cochon and I appreciate.
Leo, did we lose you there?
We lost?
Why don't we come, why don't we, we'll, we'll come back to Leo and we'll go ahead and move on to the next.
Looks like Leo was the last one with the hand raised. Okay, now we have Dolly. We're going to allow.
Good afternoon, Dolly.
Yeah. Good afternoon, council members, mayor. I appreciate you taking the time to do this. And I appreciate all the work that staff has done on this. 1982 was 18 years ago and Placerville has changed a lot since then. We've gotten a lot busier. I am a citizen and I am also one of numerous owners at Lofty Lou's Yarn Shop, which is right across the street from where the Assembly Hall will be made, will, is looking to be approved. We would like to see further information on this. We don't believe that an Assembly Hall has the same type of attendance as a restaurant in the way it's attended. If I'm going to a business meeting, I'm not going with four people in my car. I'm going with one. I'm going with one. I think it's something that needs to be looked at. And I had a question based on the square footage. Ms. Taylor keeps saying that we took all this space out, but I believe, I'd like to understand better how square footage is calculated. I think that's calculated in it. We would like to have this further studied as to the impacts of an Assembly Hall downtown and have conditions put on it to protect and be fair to the other businesses downtown. If you have them having a meeting or an assembly during event, it's going to affect everyone else. If you have something going on there during busy times like Christmas shopping, it's going to affect it. And yes, there's only two hour parking, but people can pay for longer. So I would ask that you would study this further and put the appropriate conditions on it. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to five to five.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can. Go for it, Leo.
It's okay. I'll try to hang in there as long as everything connects.
No problem.
Good meeting. It was a close planning commission vote, so I appreciate you guys giving the due diligence. Fairly new to the area, but up and down, visiting relatives over decades. So I've seen some of the changes. And, you know, on the negative side, I'm hearing the parking, but when I read the letters, it looks like, you know, that's a big systemic thing. I heard the courthouse brought up and, you know, I'm thinking you should put the parking into the bigger picture, some of those shuttles for courthouse people, things like that, that it shouldn't be your deciding factor, especially with the safety valve with the conditional use permit. On the positive side, I really missed it when the Cosmic Cafe and its venue, which is the one I visited the most, um, closed down. So, you know, you have a big picture, it's a different part of town, but I view the inside of that building, which was open for a Christmas pop-up as, you know, it's a real asset, it's a really beautiful thing and it's closed right now. So if you can find a way to open it, you know, I think that would be great. And I've emailed the Taylors over time that, you know, I'm a retired teacher and I know that the state really wants teachers to move away from missions and stuff when we're doing California history. And I think, you know, that venue, it could turn into a great destination. Thank you.
Good, how about you?
Can I go?
Yes, continue.
No, I, I'm wrapping it up. I just heard another voice, so I wasn't sure. So I'm good, let you go. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Leo.
With Gary, for both Gary and I.
Hey, Dolly, you're, go ahead and put yourself on mute.
Sorry.
So now we're going to go on to Dennis.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we got you.
I see why people ask that question because pushing that button once doesn't get you all the way there. So thank you for, for the opportunity to speak on this. As, first off, I don't think this is a bad idea for a venue downtown. I like the idea of it. A place, you know, downtown in part is about having, having and building community and downtown is a part for, is a part of community. So I don't knock that. One of the, one of the issues that I see is a challenge for, for this space and the expansion of the utilization of more people is really that most businesses, a lot of businesses downtown are transactional. People come and go on a regular basis. One of the challenges with having the courthouse in session is that they take up a significant amount of spaces for a lengthy period of time and people are paying into the, into the parking meters. So you lose that transactional basis. And that is an important part of this community in this town is those transactionals, whether it's the bank, the, the, the dry cleaners, the hardware store, the newsstand, jewelry stores coming and going, people come and go. And so to have a, have a, to increase the number of people that are parking for a significant period of time is, in my mind, challenging for transactional businesses. I mean, my pharmacy, I have a couple hundred people coming and going all, all day long. And, and if you were to take up, and when the parking lot is taken up by these spaces, whether it's various events, it shuts our business down to a significant amount. And it's, and it is challenging to, to see that. They, they actually place a value on how, how frequently parking spaces turnover. And I don't know what that number is. Years ago, it was $14,000. I don't know what it is nowadays. And if, and if they're not going to use the entire space, then let's not, let's not condition it for the full amount. I think we have a, I think you have a responsibility to recognize the impact of this on the merchants downtown. I don't think it's a bad idea. I think that it's a bad idea to add a, add a significant amount of parking to our, to our, to our downtown businesses that when business is really rolling and this, this pandemic is over, it is going to be significant and it will be impacted. And I'd like you to consider if, if you're going to go that way, then go with a lesser amount. So thank you for your time.
Now speaking will be Kathy.
Good afternoon, Kathy.
Good afternoon. I was just interested in this topic, so that's why I joined it. But I, I do have two comments. One, Sue said they're very sensitive to activities downtown. And like you, someone had said that the permit would go with the building if it ever sold. So I think Sue could be very sensitive to what goes on downtown. And if there was a new owner, they may not be. The other thing is that I just have a question because in the early 90s, we had a downtown revitalization program. And I didn't know if the revitalization plan that was adopted by the city has been reviewed for this project. And so that was just a comment, I have to say. Thank you.
Last call for public comment. Seven, three, nine.
Go ahead, seven, three, nine.
So I'm going to move down to dual user.
Hi, City Council, this is Mandy Rodriguez. And I just want to call in favor of this special use permit. You know, I've heard a lot of people talk about, you know, worrying about retail use and whatnot. And, you know, one of our great mayors that we had, Mayor Clarici, he told me, when I had my shop down there, that, you know, really only 10% of the revenue from downtown, you know, is, is the taxes. So downtown contributes very little to retail. We all know that. So I don't really think that should be an issue. And there's also, you know, a, a big push to move the courthouse away from downtown. So I, you know, in the future, that would, might, probably wouldn't even be an issue. And, you know, COVID's never going away from what our health director has said. And so I think we're, we're shifting into a new, a new period where there really isn't going to be the kind of traffic that we had in the past with the courthouses and, you know, businesses. A lot of people are working from home. So I think anything that we can bring downtown that would bring people, I think is a great, a great thing. So I, I think that you guys should approve this special use permit.
Now have Adrian Beatty.
Hi there. I'm Adrian. I have Panic and Swoon, a store on Main Street. And I also wanted to voice my support for this special use permit. I was actually down at Sutter Street twice in the last week. I took my son to the ice skating rink. And it was, the last time, it was probably, we went to the late session at eight and Sutter Street was packed. It, so it's like not, it's not retail. You can't consider ice skating like a typical thing that would be, you know, in a, in a historic downtown area, although I think we should consider it in our future. But the stores were open at night and it was like a, I think it was a Thursday. And there were so many people, I mean, being monitored because of COVID, but that were up on the street and shopping. And it sort of brought a life into the town. And I just thought, we need more of that in our town. I mean, everything just shuts at five. I think the more, the more we can get with events and live music and, you know, special meetings, especially, you know, we've seen in COVID, we can't, there, there are parades that we've missed out on this year and events that we've missed out on. There, there is so little parking for it, but it always works out. And I think people need to get used to walking more, crossing the footpaths more. Also, I think people forget that Lyft is becoming a way of life and Uber is becoming a way of life. People take rides. I mean, I have many friends in their twenties that don't have driver's licenses that are either living in an urban area or just realize they don't need one and they never had a use for one. So everything seems to be changing in the world that we live in. And I don't know, I think, I think a building that is so beautiful like this that it could really benefit as being an event center. And even if it's, you know, occasionally hosting weddings or whatever, that might be a lot of people. I think we just, we definitely, as a retail shop, I look forward to the busy days and when there's a lot going on and things are kind of cramped because I do great on those days. So that's pretty much all I have to say about that, but thanks for listening.
Now have Jen C.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can. Good afternoon.
Oh, great. Hi, thank you. I just, I just want to say, you know, and I, you know, obviously I submitted written comments, but, you know, I certainly support this project, you know, for a lot of reasons. But, you know, I just want to say, this parking issue is going to cripple this town, these traffic transportation issues. This is, this is such a bigger, larger thing that needs a whole major separate planning process. And this little, one single business and one single use is such a, such a, like, speck on, on this issue, which is huge, you know, because here we are, you know, you know, drawing, you know, a million, you know, a million people on this corridor all the time. The whole point, you know, of the traffic lights was to make people stop and come here, but nobody ever figured out, what are we going to do with the cars? So I just really want to say, you know, this is creative, you know, and, you know, I, I don't know where this emphasis on weddings is coming from, but I just want to say, I, I'm pretty sure that, you know, the Taylors and the potential for educational events is also in there and huge. And really because of the nature of it, I think it's going to also allow people to propose events and it's just going to be a creative generator of possibilities. And I just, I just feel like this town, you know, needs to really nurture this kind of creativity. It's exciting that it's not going to be the same thing every day. It's going to be changing all the time. In fact, I think that's some of what people were excited about, you know, with the space that's going to be in Old City Hall, you know, again, which I never heard. I mean, there was going to be performances and exhibits and all kinds of things in, you know, with the Arts and Culture Eldorado. And this issue of parking never came up. So I just want to say, embrace this exciting possibility that, you know, is opening so many more possibilities and deal with the traffic and transportation comprehensive planning for traffic and transportation. It is a huge thing and it, you know, parking is just, you know, part of it. But anyway, I just want to say, this is a very exciting proposal and I really hope that you can let it go forward. And, you know, I guess worst case scenario, you can put these kind of review conditions on it to kind of test it out, but it's just so positive. So thank you.
Last call for public comment on 5.1. Mayor, that seems to be all the public comments.
Hey, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and close public comments and bring.
Hold on. That's the second we got, we got one more just popped in here. We have Kirk.
Good afternoon, Kirk.
Good afternoon. I just want to mention to the clerk, I cannot hear you. I can hear the others clearly. So I couldn't hear clearly that you were saying, closing public comments. Let me suggest to begin with that there's a number of things in the appeal that are erroneous. Let's start with the assertion that was made at the hearing before the planning commission by Mr. Clarici and Thomas, that Sue Taylor and others who objected to the parklet thought it would be ruinous to park it on Main Street, devastating, is not correct. For one thing, our family has properties on the east side of the bell tower. And those situations are dramatically different. People proposed having it different parts of town, of Main Street. I even said, put it in front of Robinson's Pharmacy, but you only talked about putting it on the other side. So if you look at the photographs I gave you, or presented at the time, number one, you have a giant truck that comes in, in front of the hardware store. You've got another big truck bringing fish into Powell's. You've got the John, at Old Town Grill, has parking first catering. You don't have that at the other end of town, so it would not be the same. So that's just false. The other assertion was that this was always used for retail space. That's not correct. I appreciate being a new person to town, but it predates even Patty Barrowey. I can tell you that in one of the photographs I gave you of that end of town being an event center, there's a photograph of a meeting at 1912 of my great grandfather for a big dinner at the Ohio House, which is right across the street for a, a big event there. And then there was, of course, the Carrie House. I sent you a photograph of 200 people that were meeting there. And when someone talks about it competing with those folks, they don't have a stove. I've been to events there, they don't have a stove, though they've had cooking events. So they're not comparable. Lastly, because I see I'm out of time, I come in prepared for three minutes. We paid into those parking dues. My father was on the committee that built that and that puts us in direct interest and yet I only get two minutes. If you get a chance, look at those photographs because they dispute the assertions made by the applicant. The situation for the other end of town was not going to be ruinous. That portion of Placerville's Main Street has always had event center. This is exciting. Restaurants, it's a tough business, but having a restaurant, having a kitchen there gives them flexibility to modify depending upon the market conditions, like another pandemic and another power outage. So don't abuse your limits of two minutes, but I just note my objections in the filing I submitted. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I believe that's all there is.
All right, we'll go ahead and close. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comments and bring it back to the council for further discussion. Yes, I see. So we'll go ahead and, Mark, we're going to go ahead and give a chance for some last comments from both the appellant and the applicant. But I'm going to ask if council members have any questions of staff first.
Great, thank you.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and give a closing, and we'll do three minutes for both Mr. Rakuna as well as Ms. Taylor for any closing comments before we go to deliberation.
All right, my turn, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
All right, thank you. First of all, I appreciate all the hard work that the Taylors have done to that building. Absolutely an outstanding restoration project, probably one of the best ones in the old Golden Chain Highway. There's no doubt about the commitment that they've made to that building over the last 10 years. The ideas that Sue described this afternoon in her style and knowing both her and Tim, I don't doubt that that would be their intent. I would love to see a restaurant there. I would love to see a dinner theater there. Her ideas for it is, unfortunately, they don't come across in what the language is for an application. The turnover that you would get with a restaurant eliminates any concern you have for parking. I think we've just, you've discussed 90 minutes to two hours maximum. People eat and they move on. We would not be here this afternoon. So any of those ideas, I, as a citizen, would be fully in support of seeing happen there. I think it'd be great. I would be a frequent contender of any of those kinds of things. Unfortunately, again, the format requires that they did put down their uses, and they did include conferences, community meetings, and receptions. So I would suggest that the council does have an obligation to look at those as a more impactful use than a restaurant, and it will have some impacts on the parking district. Also, in regards, I, I thought it was interesting that one of the callers mentioned that this application would just be a single spec. And I remember very clearly that in 2019, when the parklet was installed, the loss of that single parking place for that project was indeed, at multiple city council meetings, declared to be the ruin of that end of town, and the retail businesses were going to fail for the loss of that parking. I'd also like to remind the council that regardless of who the speakers might have been in the past, there is a long history of concern that there is indeed a parking problem in this town when the economy is rolling, that improper operation of the parking district would cause the ruination of downtown for that many times. Changes to the parking regulations and the pay stations over the years have always been made with great concern for the impact to businesses, customer convenience, and the risk of shop closures. And for our final example, the restriping of the parking garage and the elimination of the very substandard tiny compact stalls. That project was delayed because there were great concerns that it removed a few parking places from a garage. Those parking places were unusable, but yet that project was delayed because of the concerns that were voiced by the community about the loss of any parking stall. So I would say that there are clear evidence that there is indeed issues with parking in this town. And in regards to the first, looking at a first-floor ordinance, again, that has nothing to do with the Taylors, but I would ask the council to look at that in the future to protect our vibrant downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rakuna. And Ms. Taylor, you also have three minutes if you can make any closing comments. Oh, you're on mute still.
Got to hit the right one. It's really hard to address these issues because I, there's a lot of, we really liked their idea, we really liked this concept, but, and, and then it goes back to parking. And it was determined that parking does not trigger, there's not a parking requirement for what we've asked for. So it's really hard to, you know, deal with that response. So I just want to ask that, oh, I did, I sent in four pages. I didn't find out about the whole parking scenario till late Friday also. And so trying to scramble to put this together has been difficult. So I sent something to all of you early this morning that's about four pages that I addressed all these different comments. And there's actually some fun history in there about the building that I discovered. It was really, it was actually called Herrick's Hall. It's where the founding fathers of Placerville went there, and they, it was there that they, they elected their leaders and determined the land layout and did all those things in 1854 within our building. So again, it was actually called Herrick's Hall. It's been used for a theater. There's a lot of fun facts that we found out about that building. But I've had to wait 40 days for this appeal. You know, this is the last day that it could be heard, and I, we feel like, you know, deny or approve it. If you're gonna, we, we can't continue on without knowing what direction to go. We've kind of had to keep it shut over two holidays, and we need to have directions. So I, you know, deny or approve. Please just make that decision, and I ask that you don't continue it to do something else. And, and if, and, and I would also ask that you don't, you know, hit us with a bunch of conditional requirements that we're not aware of, that I can't respond back to. So, you know, given that, I, you know, I love the downtown. You know, my, my battle has always been to protect the unique and historic downtown. You know, for that, we've been, you know, it's been exhausting. There's a lot of things, you know, I appreciate Mark, he did help us at the very beginning. But it's been, the city's actually done a lot of harm to our building and to us and throughout the years in trying to move forward. So I'm kind of numb now, and I, we just basically need to know which direction that you, you know, make a decision so that we can decide what we're going to do. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate that. So I have one question for you. If you were to, if this were to be approved, are you going to delay any events during COVID?
You know, we have, we've been closed since March with the, the ice cream shop, because we, the drama downtown, and I feel so bad for the different merchants, and we've spent a lot of time, you know, working on our, our projects. And there's still a lot of things that we need to do to the building. So, you know, we haven't really made a decision. We're kind of, like I said, numb, and, you know, we're dependent. Your decision makes a big effect either way to our decisions. So I can't, I don't know what we're doing. And I, like I said, we haven't really gone into researching all the COVID issues, because we, the tiny size of the ice cream shop, and we ended up losing all our ice cream over the power outage just twice. It was a huge blow, and it was just easier to shut it down than to keep going through that process. And with COVID and the, and the, all the drama, it was just, we just kept it closed. So I haven't really looked in the requirements that are there for COVID.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Sue. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go then bring it back to the council for discussion and questions. Yes, Councilmember Taylor.
I have some comments, and am I muted? Am I on?
No, you're good. You're on.
I have some comments and would take a stab at a motion, I think. First, I'd like to just say to the applicant that the building looks absolutely beautiful. I walked by it around the holidays, and the lights were on, and people were in it, and it was just really nice to see it being used. I, I really want to see our buildings filled. I hate seeing vacancies downtown. So it's, it just looks really beautiful. They've done a great job. I think that it has real potential to be a great thing for downtown if the events are frequent and diverse and serve the whole community as a whole. On the issues of parking, I, I definitely share all of the concerns that were raised. I think that the 1980s assessment calculation was probably not the best and perhaps is no longer relevant going forward. That being said, I don't think that the way that it was written, we can make changes to that now. I think that we should maybe put that on as a future agenda item. I, I don't like this idea of limiting economic growth downtown because we don't have the parking for it. I think that we should let businesses develop and grow and grow our downtown and then address the parking need as it comes up. So I, I think that definitely reassessing parking and increasing our parking stock or coming up with different strategies to get people downtown is probably in our future. Should there, let's see, oh, also, I, you know, I'd be really hesitant to tie the hands of a business and put a bunch of conditions on the hours that they can operate or the capacity that they can run at to address a problem that hasn't happened yet. I would be in favor, though, of putting a condition in this conditional use permit that we reevaluate it in a year, just so that if, if problems arise, that we can address them then. And with that, I would make a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the extra added condition that we reevaluate it in a year.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Do we have a second on that motion? All right, I'll go ahead and second that motion for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may for clarification, does that motion include the modification staff recommended for condition of approval number 11, where we deleted that one sentence?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Barelli.
I want to say that Sue made a statement that the city has given them grief during the building or the remodeling of their building, and I think that is just totally unfair. The city has worked with them for years, and I think Mr. Rebus can attest to this. I think we bent over backwards to help them out and to meet a lot of problems that came up with that building. And I really think it's unfair to chastise us, like we have been the evil people that didn't approve of what they were doing. I too think they've done a magnificent job with that building. I think it's just a great asset to the city, but I still, and I disagree heartily with Councilmember Taylor, that we put this off to see what's going to happen. We have already seen what happens. We have, I can't tell you how many meetings I have sat and listened to all the complaints of the downtown people because of this parking issue. And now we're adding to it. I don't care how it's calculated or anything else. It's going, the, the, the change in the use of this building is going to change. Dolly from next door, the, she's next door to this building, she, she hit it the nail on the head. It's, it's just going to change. And as far as the courthouse, yeah, it was supposed to move years ago, and people threw a monkey wrench in that. I, I was so happy to get the usage of that building that would enhance the downtown folks, and you saw what happened there. It's going to come back, and COVID, maybe it's not going to go away, but I think the strict restrictions are going to go away, and we are going to get business back in town. I am certainly hoping so. I certainly feel sorry for all the small businesses. I happen to have a building that is practically shut down. I know what everybody's going through, but when this opens up again, we're going to have the same problems, and then everybody's going to come, as I said before, they're going to come and they're going to yell at us because we approved this, and they have no parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's the same old story, and to, to not have the foresight, I, I, I just think it's just wrong at this particular, I mean, something's got to be addressed. There's got to be some, some kind of conditioning, conditions or what, and what they are. And I don't mean severe restrictions. I just mean some sort of conditions that the, you know, when this, a huge venue, and I think 100 people in that building is a huge, can be considered huge. And at certain times, I don't think it should be permitted.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Barelli. Councilmember No.
Okay, I have some comments, but first I have a quick question for staff. The applicant stated that if she had a restaurant, she could have 100 people. Is that a true statement?
Staff would probably base the parking requirement on the number of seating capacity rather than just an occupancy load. So in other words, if there was enough seats for, say, 80 persons, that's what it says in the code. It's one parking space for four seats.
Okay, so you haven't evaluated that?
We have not evaluated that.
Yeah, this is, I think, a very difficult issue because of the way the parking was assessed in 82. I want to be consistent. I want to make sure that we treat everybody the same and fairly. I think, look at the fact that they assessed it on square footage, then came back and made subtractions based on use was just a formula that we're never going to be able to work with. You know, it seems like they were underassessed 13 spaces, and there's not really anything we can do about that. But what that does tell us is we are going, we already know we have parking issues, you know. Because of COVID, you don't see them. As soon as COVID is over, we're going to see them again. So we're going to see more applications come forward, and I just want to make sure that we realize we're setting precedents by saying, we're not going to do anything about this. Every application that comes forward to us in the next year or two, that it's going to expand use, expand hours, that we're just going to say, okay, and we're going to have to deal with that parking on a separate measure. However, we're going to deal with that. In terms of the use permit, we've had lots of conversations about how things affect daytime businesses. And so if you will amend your motion to consider hours that do not include the morning hours, I will support the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember No. I have a question for staff. Has there been any other, do we have any other occupants along this, in the central business district where we've conditioned the parking? You know, as, on any conditional use permit, have we conditioned parking?
Not, not to my knowledge. So it's my understanding that we, we looked at a staff report that was prepared, I believe that was in, we found an old staff report in 1984 where La Casa Grande was expanding seating capacity in their restaurant. And so the city was imposing some additional requirements on La Casa Grande.
So no, at this point, nobody else has had that level of?
Nobody else that I'm aware of personally.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Jack, Councilmember No, what were you thinking in terms of your morning?
But that's up for discussion, and I think the applicant should comment on that. I mean, she has stated she mainly, you know, is looking at the evening hours. Are we talking 4:00 PM or later? What, what is, what was she talking about when she was talking about those things?
Let me go ahead and, if we can unmute Ms. Taylor's line? If she wants to make a comment to the hours.
Well, I'm, I'm confused, because if, you know, you want more business foot traffic, but then you want to regulate not being able to open it in the morning for maybe different things that we could do that are lighter traffic. So I, I think this is a very slippery slope to go in this direction. And, and I'm, I've never heard this done before, so I'm not sure what the mechanism is to require those kind of conditions. And, and I do have concerns for that. If you're going to limit us unlike anybody else, then, you know, I, I would just like to, I'm okay with the conditions of what Cara added, and I feel like if you want to keep piling on more, I'm really concerned about that and would rather just hear a yes or no based on what we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Well, I guess part of the issue is we don't have a clear business plan, you know. I listened to the planning commission meeting, and I was told at the planning commission meeting, you know, this was mostly for evening, you know, now we're saying, oh, we want to bring traffic during the day. If we're going to do that, you know, maybe we need to look at the number of that occupancy. I just asked if, if, you know, a restaurant was put in, what would be the occupancy, and we don't have an answer for that. The, you know, applicant stated a number. I asked staff, and staff can't. The, you know, applicant stated a number. I asked staff and staff can't confirm that number, so. It seems like we don't have all the information we need.
Question, uh, for Pierre. So when we, when we were, uh, going through, um. Arts, uh, for catchment muster building, um, did we have any conditions on, because they had, they were doing something similar in terms of. Uh, event space and, um, having people come out and, I mean, the irony is that a lot of the people that are supporting this oppose that. You know, on, on some similar reasons. So I'm just trying to see if we had, um, any conditions on parking for, on the arts and culture El Dorado.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of any conditions placed on them. They're not under a, um, under a conditional use permit.
Can I, can I clarify occupant load? Because there's a building occupant load and it is the same for restaurants. It's a, it's a occupant load of fifteen divided into the square footage. Their banquet hall and restaurant are the same. Now, what Pierre was talking about was determining, uh. Seating area for parking requirements. So the occupant load is through the building department and the fire department. And it is the same for a restaurant as it is a banquet hall.
If I can add a clarification, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That, that, that is true what, uh, Sue Taylor said. Basically, we have our parking ordinance that prescribes the number of parking stalls based on you. So for example, for, for a restaurant or an assembly hall, it's basically one parking stall per four seats or per four persons. As opposed to determining occupancy, just the num, the maximum number of persons that can occupy a particular building that is determined by the building code. And the, uh, fire, fire code as well.
Yeah, and when I said that reduce square footage, when you have a bathroom of, you know, seventy-five square feet, that could have had, divided by fifteen, that's how many people you could have had in that space. Now with that single restroom, it's one person. So it's not fifteen divided by seventeen, seventy-five anymore. I don't know, it was, you know. I'm not going to do that on the cuff. But anyway, that is a higher number than, once you, you know, box that out and put a restroom in there, there's only one, it only counts for one person. So we took about two hundred square feet like that and turned it into two, two people that can be in that space where it was a lot. There was a lot more that could be there. And that's how it was when they assessed us and, well, that goes back to that part, but. Occupancy is less than it was when it was a restaurant. The load. Yeah, I guess I guess.
Thank, thank you, Sue. Uh, I saw, uh, Councilmember Barelli had her hand up first and then we'll go to Councilmember Taylor.
I, I keep hearing that, that there was not a discussion when the arts, uh, wanted to move in up there and there was. A lengthy discussion, several about parking. And it was addressed that, you know, they had the parking around the back, that that was a public parking lot. And also that they had, they were in close, closer proximity to the, um, the, the lot. God, I can't remember the name of it, up there, um, on the corner across from CNH, um, that they had proximity to that. So there was a lot of discussion on the parking at that particular time when they were allowed to have their permit.
Uh, Councilmember Taylor.
One thing that I'm kind of, um, struggling with is the fact that restaurant in that space would be allowed by right. And the capacity, you know, the seating capacity and parking requirements the same. So. It just, I don't know, is, is a, it's kind, it feels like a stretch to me. Um. It just feels kind of like a stretch to be really set on this parking issue when they could easily open a restaurant there. By right and this wouldn't, this, this discussion wouldn't be happening.
Councilmember Barelli.
But that's the point. They're not opening in a restaurant. They're changing the use and. It, to me, it changes the whole scenario. And I agree that, you know. We need to change, we, we need to look at this parking issue. Um, not now, because, you know, it's, but. We, something has to be done and I think this really, you know, nails it, but they are changing the usage and it changes. It changes the whole parking thing, um, especially at, at certain times. And I, I know what Jackie, um, what she said about if they would. You know, agree not to have mornings, but I'm going to extend it clear into, because I too was under the impression that it was going to be nighttime. And that's what I saw in the planning commission, uh, what, what was presented to them. It was going to be nighttime functions. So. That, that's where I'm standing.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with Councilmember Barelli in the fact of the use changes the parking demands. Because if it's a restaurant, you go into the restaurant for an hour, hour and a half, you have your meal, you leave. When you're coming to an event for school or, you know, I've heard so many different things listed now. That they're taking up parking spots could be potentially four, five, six hours. That changes the parking use. And that's what I'm struggling with, with the youth in the park.
The question, um, to staff on the fact that this conditional use permit goes with the property or with, you know, the land. Is, can you condition the, the permit to just go with the business as opposed to it, you know, if Sue decides to sell the property or do something? That the person coming after that wouldn't enjoy the same benefit?
Uh, we, we can't. A, a conditional use permit does run with the land and it becomes an entitlement.
So there's no guarantee that the person coming after this, I mean, I know Sue's, and I have no reason to not believe her that they would be very. Cognizant of when and how and, and who would come in so that it wouldn't disrupt other businesses, but should it go to somebody else, uh, we don't have that. I mean, it would go to, it, it would go with the property.
That's correct. It would. Yeah, we, we would hope that the existing conditions of approval will manage, uh, the use. Uh, in perpetuity is, at least as long as it lasts. Um, it is limited to a hundred person occupancy max. They can't go above that. I guess my question would be how frequently are we going to see a maximum of one hundred persons in that building? Uh, that's more of a question to the applicant. Um, but the main, uh, issue that we saw was maybe music. Sometimes with these types of venues, you get a lot of noise and, uh, music then that, that causes, um. The nuisance to the neighbors and to the surrounding sidewalks.
Uh, Councilmember, thank you, uh, Pierre. Councilmember Taylor.
But we could, uh, make it a condition that the permit be reviewed annually or biannually so that if the building changed hands. And a new owner came in and, you know, was doing something very obnoxious or not, uh, being a good neighbor, that we would have the opportunity then to address it.
Yes, you can add a condition allowing for that annual review or biannual review.
Councilmember Barelli.
An example of that here was, wasn't there a business across the street that the, um, that they received so many complaints that, did the city shut them down?
Um, Councilmember Barelli, are you referring to the Hillside?
I don't know what, I don't know.
I think it was the Hillside or Bar became a nuisance and I think in that instance, I think the city worked closely with, um, the state ABC. And they were able to have their license revoked.
So, but then wasn't there another one where they were having a lot of dancing and a lot of loud and people standing outside, et cetera, et cetera? I don't know. I'm just wondering how the system works. I, I, somebody said it earlier. It would be very, very difficult. I, I did this review thing. I, I really am not in favor of that to tell somebody, well, we don't like what you're doing. Even though they've been doing it for a year, it likes, we don't like it now, now we're going to change our minds. Um, they've already presented what they're going to do. So, you know, um, to tell them a year later that they can't do it anymore, I, I don't know. Uh, because here again, nothing's set, we, we have nothing directly, it's not stated what they're going to do. So if we came in a year later and they're saying, well, we didn't say we were going to do that, or you didn't say we couldn't do that, because there's nothing to go on. Everything's iffy.
Mr. Driscoll.
Councilmember Barelli, if you have an annual review of a conditional use permit, you can't just, for no reason. Basically say, we're not going to allow it anymore. There has to be some justification of it. In other words, there has to have been some problem that has been created, which is basically incurable. So that you're going to pull a permit because of something that's developed as a result of that, not just because now we don't feel that we like it anymore.
Well, it doesn't have to be though, we don't, shouldn't it have been stated that they were going to do this and such? I mean.
Well, again, it would be because problems have arisen, which are documented and verifiable, that are detrimental to the surrounding properties and. You know, it might take a period of time before that develops.
I have a question for John.
Uh, yes, go ahead, Cara.
Would we, you know, I did, I, I didn't really intend that a permit would ever be pulled, but that additional conditions might be applied. For instance, you know, if you're having a hundred person event in the middle of the busiest time of day, you have to shuttle people in or something like that. Would we, would a review allow us to make those changes?
Sure, it would. It would allow you to see what's going on, for example, with the parking that you all have been talking about. And if there were some parking problems that developed as a result of the operation, you could weigh in with some additional conditions to try and alleviate or mitigate those, those problems.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a question for staff going back to the, so, and I know how it's calculated in terms of, um. Both, uh, the ice cream shop and then, um, this, uh, potential, uh, business establishment. Between the two of them, that it's a hundred and forty-four, is that correct?
Uh, looking at the maximum occupancy then, we would have one hundred, uh, for the proposed use before you forty-five. Occupancy for, uh, the ice cream saloon for a hundred and forty-five. And if we divide that by four, that's thirty-six and a quarter parking spaces. So you minus the twenty-three that were allocated back in nineteen eighty-two. That gives you a deficit of thirteen parking spaces. So should, should we have been able to, or if we are able to. Add additional parking requirements, they would pay a parking in lieu fee for thirteen parking stalls.
And what if, and if we could, do you know what that fee would be?
You know, I don't, I don't know. That's a fee that's, um, um, determined by council, by resolution. And I don't, I don't know if we have a fee determined for that.
Uh, Cleve or John, if, if we were to add in a, say, we approve it, but we have to pay for those thirteen, uh, extra, uh, spots. How, how would we get there?
John, John, I'll let you jump in first if you want, but I, I'm not sure based on, John and I had this discussion. And you're basing that on use when the original calculation for the, the parking district was based on. Building square foot and parcel size. And, and therefore, my initial discussion with John, I believe, was. We're not sure we can get there based on where we are today.
Well, and I, what I would say would be, if it was by right, I would absolutely agree with that, but because it is a conditional use permit, I would see that as. The mitigating factor as to why you could add in a fee because it is a conditional use.
You're, you're, you're on mute, John.
I was just looking at our ordinance, which is ten, four, five. Uh, it's a parking in Luffy and. To answer your question about how a fee is determined, there is a formula set out in the ordinance to determine it based upon what the cost of a parking space would be determined to be. Uh, having said that, uh, what Cleve said, I think is accurate. I don't think we have the basis for establishing, even under the guise of a conditional use permit. A parking in Luffy because it doesn't, the, it doesn't meet the requirements to establish one based upon ten, four, five. There's only certain conditions when they can be imposed and this doesn't, I don't think meet any of those conditions.
So as a, a condition of a conditional use, I mean, as part of a conditional use permit condition, it can't be, we can't add that in?
I don't think you can.
Okay.
What, what conditions can we add in?
Conditions relating to the operation of the business or the, uh, things like you were talking about, occupancy levels, different things like that.
So we could, so if we took the forty-four, so we have a hundred and forty-five on the building, but we're only, uh, could we. Lower the amount of, um, so we could lower the amount of people in it to be, um, congruent to, uh. The amount of spaces that they're, so twenty-three, instead of making the calculations off of, um, so basically lowering it to that thirteen spaces in terms of, uh, occupancy.
You need to know, these are two different parcels, two different buildings. You cannot include the other building in this permit.
But that's how it was issued originally. That's how it was established.
That's the parking regulations. That's not the, what we're asking for now. I was just going to mention that the reason they put. And, and Pierre brought it up, the reason they usually put entertainment as a, um, conditional use permit because of noise. And this project's been conditioned for noise issues. Uh, we can't have out, you know, we can't, so it is conditioned for that. And you can, um, these conditions allow you, if we go out and make way too much noise that disturbs everybody. You have the right to bring me back to your council and say, you know, this, we're going to warn you that your, your noise is too much for the surrounding businesses. So that's already conditioned and that's usually why they put entertainment in as a conditional use permit, so you can regulate the noise.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for background, um, staff looked at, uh, the old assessor's parcel maps because when we looked at. The assessment given, it was interesting to us that, um, the Herrick building and the Hangtown saloon were. Assessed together as one unit shown as being in one APM. So it looks like these are two legal parcels. And what we are, we're, we're under the assumption that the owner at that time, uh, probably got, uh, probably requested from the assessor's office. That they get one tax bill. And so they merged the properties together, not legally merging the parcels, but. Just merging the parcels under one assessor's parcel number to get one tax bill. Because they later divided the property back up into two legal parcels. But I think that's what was very confusing to staff at the very beginning is we couldn't figure out. Really why the, um, the allocation of those twenty-three parking spots were given to both Zo's and, uh, the, the bar. But to answer your question then, if you took, if you took, um, if you were trying to figure out what would be the maximum occupancy of, of the Herrick Hall. Given that we have an occupancy of forty-five for the ice cream, it would be, you'd cap it at forty-seven. That would, you would then have twenty-three parking spots that could accommodate both uses.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I guess, Councilmember Taylor.
Couple more comments, see if we can come to a consensus. Kind of looking at things from a macro level, the economy will be changing in the next five years as a result of COVID and we don't know what that looks like. We don't, I really hope that we don't have a bunch of vacancies. But we might. Restaurants may, may go and they may not come back. You know, we've had, we have a couple vacancies downtown. The Poki Place has been vacant for quite a while. Those are parking spaces that aren't being used right now. Um, I think any opportunity that we have to bring life downtown and to diversify, um, is strategically prudent. And, um, you know, we, we don't know what demand on parking is going to be like with Uber and Lyft and electric cars and, um. Things are changing. So I think. Allowing this to go forward and looking at how it affects things and how traffic affects things in parking. It may be a complete non-issue or it may be an issue or additional, um. um, it may be a complete non-issue, or it may be an issue or additional, um, conditions would need to be added. But I would, you know, just really hesitant to, um, turn away, um, using a building or, uh, making things difficult for a business owner in terms of how they run their business, especially if we don't know if there's actually gonna be an impact. And one more thing, I know that, you know, I know that the applicant has a long history with the city. I know that there's been lots of, um, issues with parking in the past and disagreements. But I feel like it's just really important for this body that we all put on blinders and look at, you know, an issue that comes before us on its own merit, which is what I'm trying to do here. And I, I would take this position on any applicant that was trying to open up a, a store or a venue.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I'll add one, um, if you accept the amendment that, uh, we would proceed as you've, uh, with the original, um, the original, uh, motion, but with the caveat that no events can happen in this place until COVID has lifted, or at least it have to be, uh, because we're not having any indoor, they're not allowed right now. They're not allowed having any type of indoor events. Um, so I, I don't see the, I mean, you can't have seventy-five people in there or a hundred people in there right now during COVID. Um, and so until we get to that point, we're not having weddings indoors at these places anyway. At least if they are, they're happening illegally. So if we do do it, I, I just don't wanna see, um, uh, cause I get it, I think we should be consistent on how we do these. But at the same time, on this particular issue, these are events. Events are like the last thing that's gonna happen during, um, you know, it's like the last thing during COVID that's gonna come back. That's why we're not doing ballgames, now, why we're not having movie theaters open. And so I don't wanna see a hundred people crammed into a building. If we can do things that are, uh, COVID compliant, I think that's great, just like any other business that we would have downtown. But I also think, um, we shouldn't start seeing events just popping up, weddings or music events or anything else that are indoors.
So, um, there's laws about that right now. I, I would be concerned about putting that on our conditional use permit about COVID. It's kind of like saying we can't violate our speed limit, um, either on there. So I, I think that's a law. I mean, we, we've shut down our ice cream shop since March.
Yeah, but you've had other events in there. And I think we're having a Women's, Women's Federated event in there next week.
We've done some things that are private.
But private doesn't matter. You, you can't have people gathering anywhere, whether it's at your house or in a building.
They had Christmas sales down there. They had a, a little school, I understand. They're that, they've had people in there. And that just, you know, that, that's why I keep saying, you know, I want something concrete to state exactly what they're gonna do and who's gonna be in there.
You can't make up things of regulatory impact. There, there were permits for that and, and I wasn't involved. I didn't, you know, that, that was all processed through the legal process of how they do.
It's your building. It's the same building that you're asking for all these things for.
And what has been done there was they got a permit. So it's, is, nevermind, I, it's, it's.
All, all it, look, that's, that would be my motion would be that it has to be COVID compliant for any, for any event center to open downtown. I'm fine with me going forward, but with COVID compliance, I just don't see it opening anytime soon.
So if there's an event that was compliant with whatever the rules of the day were for COVID, then they, it's okay to do that type of event, correct?
Absolutely. But not just, I mean, you couldn't have forty people in there for a lecture.
I've never had forty people in there, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I think, uh, and I welcomed all of the discussion, you know, the, uh, the, I, I am the appellant here this afternoon. And so therefore kind of the, the bringer of this motion to the reconsideration for the council and everybody involved. And it's been, uh, very interesting to hear all of your discussions. And, um, one thing, a couple of comments, one that I am to, uh, also found it interesting that back in seventy-eight, or excuse me, eighty-two, they assessed those two properties together. And that gave that combined property twenty-three spaces. If they were to be separated today, that I would think would be very disastrous for, um, the use for an event center, because then there, if you just did the simple math and said each one gets eleven, or excuse me, uh, yeah, eleven and a half, parking spaces, that's kind of taking this whole process the wrong way. Your staff has clearly outlined that the occupancy currently at the Ice Cream Parlor is forty-five. And the, uh, the application requests an additional one hundred. Now, what I have heard, and you, you have all done the math, you're just, your most recent math was that, that would then give the current spaces would give the event center, uh, an occupancy of forty-seven parking places. Or, excuse me, forty, forty, wouldn't that be great? Forty-seven, uh, occupants in the building. There was also the idea that to come back and review this, which seems very appropriate, because this is a new use. And when the economy does recover, parking will again become a big issue. Perhaps you could consider combining, uh, a review on this and allow the applicant, I haven't heard Sue talk about, starting out with maybe a fifty-person occupancy, rounding it up a couple three to allow this to open and try it. One, another comment I heard someone concerned about morning meetings. And I think that building is perfect for a morning meeting to walk down there. That end of town is beautiful every morning. And they have fifteen or twenty or twenty-five people in there. Seems totally appropriate. So, um, I don't, I, I don't think that's a productive way to go to try and put those kind of conditions on it. Just to throw it out there, since this is my, my, my appeal, it's just based on what the known numbers are. Is there some way that the two venues could share for this first year, um, and move forward to see what the real impacts are?
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
I, I kind of wish you'd just do yes or no. This is so torturous. I just, um, you know, there's regulations within the city. Where you have the rules and laws before you. It's like you're trying to add extra conditions upon us because of personal issues. Um, you know, this shouldn't be personal. I, I feel again, you know, I'm getting beat up. It's just, who, who have you done this to where you're stringing them out this long deciding yes or no on entertainment? I, um, I haven't, you know, there are things that harmed our building, and I don't wanna go into all that, but it's been, it's, it took two years of our time, enormous amount of money, because of damage that happened when the main water broke in our building. We had to wait eighteen months for that building to dry out. We, we had to fight the city to get, um, compensation for that. It was a huge battle and it harmed, we were on a roll. We were getting these things done. And every time I come before the board, it's like you have to regurgitate how long we're taking or the things that are happening. So yes or no? I just.
Thank you, Sue. We're gonna bring it back to the council. Uh, thank you. So I appreciate what you're saying. I understand the yes or no on that. But we're gonna bring it back to the council. Uh, we have a, a first and a second on, on the motion. I had asked for a friendly amendment to include that the CUP couldn't move forward, uh, or they, they wouldn't be able to open until COVID would allow an entertainment center to actually operate, uh, unless they could do it with, um, a, uh, with COVID compliance.
So the amendment would be that they follow the current COVID guidelines?
Correct.
Cause they will be constantly changing.
Correct. Is that a, an acceptance?
Yep.
So we have a first and a second on that. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Uh, I just wanna reiterate, we're gonna have a huge parking problem. I don't see any basis that we should deny this, but that, you know, we're gonna have more coming forward and this council should put on a future agenda how we're gonna start dealing with that parking. Cause we need to be consistent. This isn't one time. We can't say yes to this applicant and then no to the next two applicants. We're gonna have to say yes to all of them. And, um, that's a serious issue, I think, that we, we need to take up.
I agree. I think that that should definitely be added as a future agenda item, so that we can be consistent.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead then and call a roll call on this motion.
Mayor Saragosa?
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli?
No.
Councilmember No?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Okay, that measure passes three, one. Uh, wanna thank both.
Cause it's a double negative. It's an appeal. Do you approve the appeal or do you approve the?
Yeah. Thanks, thanks, Sue. I didn't hear anything about denying my appeal.
Yeah, so is this, yeah, you gotta figure out, are you approving the appeal or you're denying the appeal?
Nine moving and adding, and adding the condition to the conditional use permit that we'll review it in a year and that the events that are hosted there need to be COVID compliant.
I, that's a strange regulation. So I'm not sure, is there a timeline on that? Are you gonna put that into my conditions of approval and to perpetuity? I mean, it can, if, uh, that's just kind of a strange, I mean, I, I understand following COVID compliance. I just, as all the other health regulations that we have to comply to under the county health department. And they're the ones that regulate that. So this is kind of a weird, can you actually put a regulation? It's a county health, uh, department regulation on my conditions of approval for this entertainment permit?
Mr. Morris?
If I could, uh, we will work up that condition. I think we understand what your intent is. Uh, there are state guidelines for, uh, compliance with, uh, COVID, uh, regulations that the state has issued. And that's what I think you're, you're talking about. It's not a county. It's the state guidelines you're referring to. Um, and so we, we can work up that condition that we will add to the, the, um, conditions for this permit.
Okay, again, I'm.
Yeah, Sue, Sue, uh, we've stopped, uh, conversation from both the appellant and the applicant. Thank you.
So they, they did.
You're muted.
They, they are asking for clarification of the motion based on the agenda item, which was to approve or deny the appeal.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can read it, what, what, what I, what I think the council is doing is you would be affirming the decision of the planning commission approving conditional use permit twenty-dash-oh-six to allow a place of entertainment, parenthesis, Assembly Hall on the first floor at three oh-one Main Street, based on the findings made by the planning commission, denying the appeal. And then, um, doing the, um, amending, uh, condition of approval eleven per, per staff. That's eliminating that sentence. It says operation of the facility, regardless of the hours permitted to be open to the public. And then adding a condition that staff will, will formulate, basically that the uses shall be, uh, compliant with, uh, state regulations regarding, uh, COVID-nineteen. And then that staff will bring the conditional use permit back. And I'm assuming we're gonna bring it back to the council, or we're gonna bring it back to the planning commission for that one-year review. What's the clarification on that?
Back to the council?
Okay. Thank you.
And by affirming the planning commission's decision, you're inherently denying the appeal.
Correct.
Thank you, Pierre.
Okay, so we had, uh, so that was three, one, right? So we're, all right, we're done. Uh, Mr. Akuna?
Uh, just briefly, uh, just to consider the, uh, the idea of having council and staff, direct, direct staff to, um, to look at that, uh, use of first floor for commercial retail uses in the central business district. I just appreciate it. That could be a consideration as you move forward in the new year. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Sue, for your time. We'll go ahead and take a ten minutes' work for everybody before we move on to item five point two. Okay, we'll take a ten-minute recess and we'll be back at five forty. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, call the meeting back to order and move to item five point two. Consider an appeal filed by the Placerville Downtown Association and the Friends of Historic Hangtown of the Planning Commission's December first, twenty-twenty approval of CUP twenty-dash-zero-four and site plan review twenty-dash-zero-four, and then affirm the planning commission's decision, deny the, denying the appeal to allow Formula Business Therapy Store at three thirty-one, uh, three, excuse me, three thirty-nine Main Street. Uh, and again, Mr. Revoss has, uh, this report for us this evening.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll try and, uh, be a little more, uh, brief. I think you've, you've probably have read the staff report and everything that's in there. So I'll just try and maybe provide some additional supplement to the staff report. So, um, as you stated, this is an appeal of a, of a conditional use permit and site plan review for the therapy stores, was approved by the planning commission. It was, um, appealed by Friends of Historic Hangtown and the, and the downtown, um, downtown Placerville Downtown Association. So, uh, the first contention is that, uh, the appellant is basically stating that the project is not essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, because the project as a formula business is inconsistent with the character of the city's central business district. Staff would just basically state that this is a, um, a false assumption. Basically, formula businesses are permitted use. In two thousand and four, the city approved a amendment to the codes that basically defined what a formula business was. And I'm gonna give a little background. I don't think this is in the staff report, but, um, at that time, uh, the city was working with Caltrans for the, um, Highway fifty operational improvements. So the city was anticipating the connection between Placerville Drive and Main Street with that bridge. So, um, in anticipation of that, the city rezoned a lot of those lands at the, at the, um, west end of Main Street from commercial to central business district to expand the central business, business district, uh, zone area. And the city was concerned about formula businesses, fast food restaurants, or whatever they may be, uh, that would wanna locate and develop that area that, that, that was gonna be opened up at the west end of town. So the ordinance change basically doesn't prohibit a formula business. It just defines what a formula business is, and that's five or more stores. So that the city then has discretion over, for the most part, what that business, uh, would look like and how it operate. So let's just take, for example, a McDonald's. Uh, typically McDonald's, uh, building, the entire building takes the form of a sign, if you will. And that would be very much not in keeping with the downtown character. So under the site plan review, the city has the ability to really modify what that fast food restaurant would look like. Most McDonald's have a drive-through restaurant or a drive-through window. Uh, that would be another, um, operational component that may not be consistent or desirable for the central business district, since the, that, this downtown, uh, business district is supposed to be pedestrian oriented. So that's a flexibility. So to say that on its face, because it's a formula business, is not allowed, is, is absolutely false. And I'm gonna read from the central business, uh, district zone purpose statement. Cause I think this'll, this just sets the, this hopefully puts that the rest. The purpose statement is, one, provide for a broad range of pedestrian-oriented, commercial, institutional and public uses. Two, protect the downtown area from encroachment of unrelated and incompatible uses. And then three, differentiate the downtown areas from all other land uses designations because of its unique character. But what we have here is a retail store, and I'm sorry, retail store fits all of those. Moving on to the second issue, uh, the appellant states the project is not essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, because the project is a. to the public convenience or welfare because the project as a formula business may result in business closures and resulting in urban decay in the central business district. So I'm going to spend a little bit more time on this one. So the appellant is making the assumption that basically because the therapy stores, it's a retail business enterprise, is defined by the city code of the formula business that said business may result in business closures that would then trigger urban decay. So the appellate commission to study that was prepared by economist Philip King. He has a PhD in economics. And Mr. King comes to the conclusion that a formula store, such as a therapy store, does indeed have the potential to close other non-formula businesses in the historic Placerville downtown area, which will damage the unique local character of downtown Placerville. Ultimately, the closing of local businesses downtown to lead to urban decay. And you have that in your staff report. City staff disagreed with that. We felt that was quite a reach. I know we've all heard of the predatory practices of, say, a Walmart, which I've read myself many times, Walmart would open up a store of a hundred thousand square feet or more just outside the city limits of many small towns throughout the Midwest in a predatory fashion to where the commercial square footage under that one roof of a Walmart would be equal to or exceed the total square footage of a small downtown. And then they had the buying power with thousands of stores to undercut the prices that you would get in those mom and pop stores in those small areas. Staff doesn't see that here with therapy stores, which has a combined square footage, I think just over twenty thousand square feet of their current eleven stores. So staff consulted with its own economists. So staff consulted with ALH Urban and Regional Economics to prepare an economic study specifically to review the conclusions of what we call the King Study for consideration by the council. That then allows the council to weigh and consider two different expert testimonies that are submitted in your review of this request. So in particular, to provide information and evidence for the council, consideration the establishment of therapy stores would not cause the closing of other downtown businesses causing urban decay. So in summary, and I'm just going to summarize, I just want to mention that Amy Herman, who was the author and the preparer of that study, is available for you should you have questions regarding her report. But her conclusion was that, and this is just a summary, that the operation of therapy stores is not likely to cause any of the sixteen existing businesses identified by Dr. King to experience a sales impact sufficient to risk business closure. Two, therapy stores will add to the vitality of the commercial retail base in downtown Placerville and will complement the existing retail base. And then the third conclusion is, there is no reason to consider that opening of a proposed therapy stores would cause or contribute to urban decay. Another item of issue with the appellant is that the city may not lawfully approve the project because it is not adequately complied with the California Environmental Quality Act. And the project is not exempt from CEQA because there is substantial evidence in the record that the project will result in significant urban decay impacts in the community, in the central business district. Staff would just say that to say that there's substantive environmental impact when they're moving in, a retail store is moving into an existing retail store in an existing building and not doing any construction other than removing a sign and painting the building. Staff does not see any environmental impact there. So then to rely on the potential for significant impact, because remember, it's a potential for significant impact for urban decay, well, that's quite a reach and that's very speculative. And I think with the study that was prepared by Amy Herman, I think that provides the council with ample documentation that that would not occur. That is not something that is any foreseeable way would occur. The last item that the appellant raises is that the appellant states the planning commission's decision may have been the result of an unfair hearing. Specifically, some or all of the planning commissioners may have impermissibly prejudged the matter. So I provided to the council in the staff report sort of a description of something that did happen and how that was rectified to eliminate even the perception of impropriety in actions of the planning commission. Basically, the appellant states that the planning commission may have been the result of an unfair hearing. No information or evidence has been presented to support that assertion. On the contrary, Commissioner Keeney prepared and sent an email to the planning commission members and the city council members wherein she presented an optional approach to formula businesses that was used by the town of Los Gatos for consideration by the city. So although well intentioned, upon advice by staff and council, Commissioner Keeney did recuse herself from any of the deliberation on therapy stores applications to eliminate any perception of conflict of interest or predisposition towards the applications. And then one item that was in the, the appellant's appeal was that there was an accusation that either staff or city officials recruited the therapy store. I don't even know where to begin with that one, other than I never heard of therapy stores until they made their application. But it's not unlike cities to do recruiting. I mean, how, for how many years has the city tried to recruit, for example, Trader Joe's to come to Placerville? Or the hiring of HDL to do a recruitment of different businesses that were identified that were brought to council that we may try and seek to bring to town? So I don't know even know where to go with that one. But with that, staff's recommendation is that the council would affirm the decision of the planning commission approving conditional use permit twenty dash oh four and site plan review request twenty dash oh four to allow a formula business at three thirty nine Main Street, based on the findings that are made by the planning commission, denying the appeal filed by Placerville Hangtown Association and the Friends of Historic Hangtown. Staff further recommends that the city council make the following finding, modifying the CEQA finding that's in Roman numeral two E made by the planning commission as follows. So moving to item finding E, it states, "The comments submitted by Philip G. King, Ph.D. do not provide credible or reliable factual and/or applicable information for consideration of this project." And the commission rejects, or I would say now it should be, yeah, the commission rejects would be the council rejects said comments with respect to identification of a potential significant environmental impact resulting for the project. So that's the same. Staff is recommending you add the following sentence to that section. "The city council concurs with conclusions made by Amy Herman, ALH Urban and Regional Economics, contained in the therapy stores impact analysis Placerville, California, study of the establishment of a therapy stores in the downtown Main Street business district as follows." And there's three of them, and I'll read them into the record. "The operation of therapy stores is not likely to cause any of the sixteen existing businesses identified by Philip G. King, Ph.D. to experience a sales impact sufficient enough to risk business closure. Two, therapy stores will add to the vitality of the commercial retail base in downtown Placerville and will complement the existing retail base. And then three, there is no reason to consider the opening of the proposed therapy stores would cause or contribute to urban decay." So that concludes staff's report. I just have one cleanup item. I just want to point out that on page eight of the staff report, the second bullet, last sentence, we meant to say CEQA acronym, C-E-Q-A, instead of just CEQ. So with that, that concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Any questions for staff at this moment? Or for Ms. Herman? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and hear from the appellant. And they have twenty minutes to, for their presentation, and they can split that up as they see fit.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Patrick Solory, and I represent the appellant's Placerville Downtown Association and Friends of Historic Hangtown. I have twenty minutes, which we've agreed to, and I will split that time with Heidi Meyerhofer, who I believe is also on this call. The first issue that I'd like to address is actually really critical here, especially after hearing the staff report. And this pertains to the nature of the city's authority over this use. Now, Mr. Rivas stated, and I took very careful notes on this. He said, "A formula business is a permitted use here," and this is clearly a formula business. That is actually a false statement. And I think it leads to a lot of the confusion about what's going on here. And then he also makes the related point that the city's authority to review and approve the CUP pertains only to, quote, and it's a quote, the, what it looks like and how it operates, not whether the use itself can be approved or more importantly denied. And this is seen from, well, first I'll turn to the city's development guide itself. And again, it's basic land use that for any zone you have permitted uses, conditional uses, and prohibited uses. A permitted use is one that's allowed as a matter of right. You talked about the restaurant use in the prior hearing being a use allowed as a matter of right. This is unquestionably not that. This is unquestionably a conditional use. And that is a completely different animal because it's therefore subject to discretionary authority by the legislative body, which is you. And according to your own development guide, CUP's conditional use permits allow for special consideration and review uses not permitted by right in each zoning classification where such uses may be deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare and are in harmony with the various elements or objectives of the general plan and are not detrimental to surrounding property. So in order to approve, in order for the city to exercise its authority to approve the use, and the use is a formula business as opposed to just a regular retail use, the city needs to make that finding, and implicit in that finding under the law is that it's the general health and welfare standard applies, which is basically what's summarized by your development guide. The city, the scope of the city's review is not limited to simply determining whether its appearance is acceptable to the city or the signage, you know, has impermissible neon or the colors or whatever. That is, that is really misleading and it's wrong. So again, this is a critical point. The city's authority is to determine whether this formula business has any, has impermissible detrimental impact to surrounding businesses. It is not just to determine the appearance, because frankly, there are two entitlements being sought here. There's the conditional use permit, which goes to the use. And then there's the site plan review, which addresses all those things that Mr. Rivas talked about. We're talking about the use and whether the use of this retail establishment by this large operator, and I can go into Dr. King's findings regarding the detrimental impacts to the surrounding properties. I'll go into that a little bit. But this, but I just want to make sure this council understands that it has authority to deny that use if it finds that it's, there's an unacceptable likelihood that it could result in business closures to existing local businesses. And another point I think is really critical, and it was brought up in the last hearing, is that CUP's run with the land. So while the applicants here, they appear to be very lovely people, they appear to be very responsible. And, you know, and I've seen and heard comments like, well, this isn't really a chain store. They have only eleven or twelve locations. If something happens where they decide for whatever reason they want to move on, that use permit runs with the land and will authorize as a matter of right in perpetuity any other chain store. Maybe a chain store that is much larger, and I don't know, you know, I don't do much shopping, but maybe the Gap or Abercrombie and Fitch or, you know, something like that that you all may not like. By approving this CUP for this formula business, you were allowing such uses as a matter of right. And I think that you all need to understand that you're kind of opening the, potentially opening the floodgates here with that. And now I'll briefly turn to why, why that's a concern, why everybody is so concerned about this. Dr. King's report explained why it is that larger businesses have this kind of unequal power. Like they can, they can talk to the distributors and basically say, hey, you know what? We've got twelve locations. You need to shut out these other small operators. You need to stop selling these items to these other operators or we're going to stop working with you. They have greater access to capital. They can get loans cheaper. There's a whole bunch of things that make them more competitive than small locally owned businesses. And that's precisely why Dr. King stated that there was the potential for this to result in business closures. An issue that was, you know, basically not addressed by the city's, the city's expert. And instead, the city, the city's expert just lined up the different offerings and said, well, there's going to be overlap here and there's going to be overlap, there's not going to be overlap here. But the potential impact can be mitigated. And this kind of gets to the environmental issue, right? Is the expert suggested, well, we can just mitigate this because the applicant has this policy of they don't want to compete. Well, what does that mean? Is that, is that a mitigation measure? Is that a condition of approval? How is that enforceable? It's not enforceable at all. And so as a result, while this report suggests that there's things that maybe could be due to, done to mitigate the impact, none of those things are actually being implemented. And so as a result, you have a situation, sorry to get technical here, but under CEQA, you cannot rely on a categorical exemption if there are unusual circumstances that may result in a significant impact. Here, there's no question that the project's location in the central business district is an unusual condition. And so the only question is whether there's a fair argument of potential urban decay resulting from that. You've got the city's expert explaining that she doesn't think it does. You have the appellant's experts suggesting that it does. And under the law, when you have a battle of the experts under this fair argument standard, the exemption doesn't apply. Now, the city's expert has stated some reasons why she doesn't think Dr. King is credible. I wrote a letter explaining why I don't believe that some of her observations are credible. Basically, you've got a classic battle of the experts. And that is enough to trigger the need to do a mitigated negative declaration, which frankly is required here because there are some good things in the expert's report like having some kind of plan to not overlap product lines. But that's not fleshed out at all in any kind of meaningful detail. And it's not, it's simply not enforceable. So, you know, I just want to turn back to ordinance one five nine seven, which again is a city's ordinance establishing the use of a formula business and explains that it is a conditional use, not a permitted use, a conditional use in the central business district. And it simply says, "Certain formula business establishments do not reflect the." And it simply says, "Certain formula business establishments do not reflect the unique character of the community and thus cannot contribute to the established uniqueness of the central business district." There is a whole host of concerns regarding the compatibility, the character of the use, the potential detrimental effect on existing uses that are more than enough to justify denial of the permit, separate from whether some kind of additional environmental review is necessary. This body can find that due to Dr. King's report and the potential for business closures, this project may have a detrimental impact in the central business district and therefore the council is denying the permit. It absolutely has the authority to do that. And I'm really disappointed that there appears to be so much confusion on this point. I'm sorry, I'm just checking, just checking all of my notes here to see if there's anything else that I want to cover. No, there really, there really isn't. And in fact, what I'll do at this point is turn the presentation over to Heidi and she can talk a little bit more about, because she represents the association of business owners who are most directly affected by this project, which is frankly, I'm sure, you know, who you want to hear from. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Heidi if she's out there.
Thank you, Mr. Solari. Go ahead, Heidi.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm going to be reading a prepared statement because I want to make sure I get this right. "I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm representing the Placerville Downtown Association, its membership, and many of the merchant businesses within the 300 to 400 block of Main Street. When word got out that a formula business was going into Combellic's building that would sell essentially everything that can already be found on Main Street in various shops, great concern arose. As a result, we endeavored to solicit the opinions of the merchant community as well as the visitors to Main Street, many local people and many visitors and tourists. Over the span of the few weeks during the holiday season, the busiest time for retail merchants, we were able to connect directly with 74% of the business owners, of which 92% of them signed the petition seeking to keep formula businesses and chain stores out of the central business district. Another petition similarly written was for our visitors to sign, and it was left in a few store locations where they could sign if they so desired. We have collected over 500 signatures on that petition. We had the opportunity to speak with those, many of those who felt compelled to sign the petition, and every one of them cited their love of the unique character of our historic downtown and their concern that when we begin to look like any town USA with formula businesses and chain stores, we will lose our charm and the reason they return to us again and again, bringing their friends who visit from out of the area. It was hoped that this input would be appreciated by the decision makers on the planning commission and now the city council, as it is your duty to govern with the interests of your constituents and the community for which you serve. The people who are elected to represent, have, the people who you are elected to represent have spoken, and it is within your rights to exercise discretion in this matter. Formula business approval is not a matter of right, as Patrick said. It is a conditional approval based on a number of things, one of which is, does it fit the character of the district? It is continually suggested that the only thing to be considered in the approval of a conditional use permit is the exterior of the building. This is a site plan review. But the review of the use of the business is also allowed for and should be equally considered. Does this use fit in with the character of the neighborhood? I emphatically tell you it does not. In a letter I submitted to the council earlier, I referenced ordinances 1487, signed by Councilwoman Borelli's late husband, and ordinance 1597, both of which are currently on the books with the city of Placerville. These ordinances give you the grounds upon which you can exercise your discretionary powers and deny this use permit. Councilwoman Borelli, I appeal to you directly to respect the legacy of your late husband. You and the entire council owe this to the people you represent. Secondly, bringing in a formula business that is set to compete with an unfair advantage due to their buying power as a formula business with many of the existing businesses on Main Street will have a devastating effect on the smaller businesses who have invested greatly in our town and who are struggling already due to the effects of COVID, the power safety shut offs, business days lost to intense smoke from giant fires, and at times the strangling effects of traffic during Apple Hill season. This business, if approved, might well be the straw that breaks the merchants' back. I appeal to you very, much the same way that the previous PDA board under the presidency of Dennis Thomas at that time appealed to the Board of Supervisors when the Walmart was being proposed. They too felt the concerns of bringing formula chain stores to Placerville and the potential negative impacts on the local businesses. While the therapy store is no Walmart, and while Walmart was five miles away from the district, that board and those merchants still had a concern. The therapy store is in the heart of the business district with, which the PDA represents, and it will have an impact on the smaller shops. When it was suggested at the planning commission meeting that the smaller shops just have to be better and perhaps just change their product lines in order to compete, that was a blatant disregard for how hard merchants already work at maintaining unique lines and a variety of merchandise in their stores. It also does not understand how difficult that process would be. There is currently a very real attempt by most merchants to be collaborative and to show respect for one another by not having duplicate items or lines of merchandise. It's an unwritten rule that people have just kind of taken up organically, and it works for the most part. It's not 100%, but it's a concerted effort to complement each other and not compete directly. The therapy store carries dozens of duplicate lines, and they can afford to purchase in bulk and in greater variety than the mom and pop's budgets will allow. As I have stated earlier, you have discretion here to deny this formula business and protect the unique character of the downtown shopping district, which by the way was voted El Dorado County's best shopping mall or district by Style Magazine in 2020, and to protect the livelihoods of the small business owners of the central business district. Please listen to your constituents. And lastly, I attended via Zoom this morning the county Board of Supervisors meeting. I found it to be very informative. It was a governance meeting. I found it to be very informative, and it provided an opportunity to reconnect with the purpose of governance and the roles of individuals in government. I would like to encourage you to find the recording and perhaps review it together as a council. And perhaps ask your commissions, like the planning commission, to view it as well. I think it would be very helpful in creating an atmosphere of cooperation and progress when we are all reminded of the roles we play and the responsibilities we have in those roles to each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heidi. Okay. Are there any questions at this time for the appellants? Okay, we're going to go ahead then and move to the applicants.
I cannot start a video, but I can clarify something really quick for the Gap store. The average square footage for a Gap store is 18,000 square feet. And for the 11 locations we have, our total footage is 20,000. So you compare one Gap store to 11 of our locations. So I just kind of want to give you a concept, what retail store location and the square footage is. And then for Abercrombie, it's 9,000 square feet. So if you want to talk retail, I really want you to have some facts, yeah, so we can talk retail. And I've been in retail for almost 30 years, and I think competition, it's good for the public. And this is a capitalism environment. Competition makes us work harder and makes us work smarter. So I don't think I should apologize for that. That's it. I can. I don't know if you guys can hear me.
Yeah, we know, we can hear you. Was that the end of your? Okay, thank you, Jing. Appreciate that. I like it. And that might be one of the shortest talks we've ever had, so thank you. All right. Are there any questions for Jing at this moment from council members? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Public comment is open for item 5.2. If you are joined by phone, please select star nine to indicate your desire to speak, and you will be called upon when it's your turn. If you are joining by computer, select the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen. Please limit your comments to two minutes and voluntarily state your name for the record. You will be asked to unmute yourself before speaking. If you are joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak, and you will be called upon using the last three digits of your phone number. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. Now taking public comments from Laurel.
Laurel, you're on mute.
Am I there now?
Yep, I begatcha.
Okay, thank you. Laurel Brimbaum, Chamber of Commerce. Free enterprise and competition are the foundation of commerce in the United States of America. This addition to Main Street, I believe, will be a huge asset, and I believe that it will up the game for everybody and benefit all of the businesses on Main Street. We believe, and this is a strong statement, it would be completely un-American to deny this project. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Laurel.
Now taking public comment from Steve Noe.
Good evening, Steve.
Hello, yes. Just for clarification, did I understand the PDA representative to say that the businesses of the PDA collude to limit competition? That seems very suspect for overall for the good of the town. So that was very disturbing to hear. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve.
Now hearing from Scott Sola.
Good evening, Scott.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to thank Heidi and the PDA for all the great work they did, all the things that were said tonight, really clarified things from my point of view. And I also think it's a little bit of a shame that the business owners had to go this far to be listened to, to go and hire a study and all these experts to refute the experts of the government that is supposed to be helping them out in this central business district. It's not a matter of competition, it's a matter of proportion, and it's a matter of our town's character, the very character that I think therapy stores is trying to cash in on frankly. They're leaving their urban environments for frankly, where the best customers are moving to, which is our great, great town of Placerville, to take, to take advantage of the environment that our hardworking business owners have established. I think they deserve to be listened to. I think they've spoken disproportionately, the locals want this store to be somewhere else in the city. Welcome them to the city, but just not in this area, I think, is how we all feel. Thank you very much, that's all.
Thanks, Scott.
Now speaking, Ruth Michelson.
Thank you, good evening. I really hadn't planned on calling because I've written letters and I've spoken before, and I think you, well, this particular body hasn't heard everything that we've all had to say, but if you've read the letters, and I hope you have, and there were many, both for the planning commission meeting and for this evening, I think, you know, you'd get the idea of how we merchants feel about things. But I was inspired to call by the first two calls. I really, as a merchant, to be called an American in my views is really disturbing. Wow, really unfair. We are all Americans, we're trying to make a living. We exist here, and I would hope that that organization would benefit those who are here, more so than someone who is wanting to come into our community. That was one item. And the second caller who says something about colluding, no, there's no collusion, there's cooperation. We work together, we are a community, we support one another. It's a lot of hard work to be a merchant on Main Street and to have a business that's successful. And we're just trying to have the ordinances that are in place be, be put, you know, keep the downtown in a historic and original, unique place that we have all, we're all, sorry, I'm kind of getting flustered, I was so upset, but we've all made an investment of our time and of our energy into our businesses, and we're just trying to protect them, and we help each other out. And this is nothing personal, and if they wanted to open any other kind of non-chain store, we would welcome them. If they want to open anywhere else besides the central business district, we would welcome them. So this has to do with the flavor of the town, and my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Now taking comment from Adam Anderson.
Hi, this is Adam Anderson. Could you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, I'm a business owner and a property owner on Main Street, and I had been involved in the PDA in the past, and it's my understanding now that I was under the understanding that the PDA was basically defunct, and to hear that Heidi Meyerhofer represents me as the Downtown Association, where I was never asked about this, I never saw any polling on this, and my understanding, it's a small group of people that are using the name of the PDA to forward their political agenda. And I take this as an offense that they would do this and use the PDA as a tool to block this lady's business. Basically, I feel that I like to welcome the therapy store. I don't see any problem with them coming there, it's not a Walmart, it's not a major national chain, it's a lady who has had success with a number of different locations, and she's taken that success to our town. It's better than seeing an empty building, which, the building I bought was empty for three years. Now I got a building two doors down that's Now I got a building two doors down that's been empty for a long time. And the building that's now just being recovered there at 301 Main Street has finally become useful after six or seven years of being an economic dead zone on our Main Street. So I wouldn't want to see that happen to the Kembellic Building and store, and I wish Mrs. Chen good luck with her business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Now taking comment from Adrian Beatty.
Hi there, my name is Adrian Beatty, and I have a shop at 430 Main Street. And in response to Jing, I just wanted to list some retail chains that are much smaller than the ones that were previously listed. Sephora, Urban Outfitters, Forever 21, Charlotte Russe, H&amp;M, and other various chains that you'll see in places like the Eldorado Town Center or the Paladio. I think that my biggest goal here is to stop a gate from opening that will let that kind of recognizable chain be on our street. I welcome competition, and I especially welcome local competition, people that have, I mean, I've gone on four years in May of my store being open, and it has been a doozy to stay there. And I think we are all seeing the boom in real estate right now, and we know that this isn't going to be a place where empty storefronts are going to be for long. So I think if a store was empty in 2010 or '12 for three years, it's a big difference than right now. We are having a mass movement of people with the work-from-home situation that's available now come up to our rural areas. And I think for the sake of preserving our town and, I mean, save therapy, making some kind of agreement that they're not going to grow into some gigantic chain or West Coast recognizable chain, I think if they're going to stick with 12 stores, and that's that, and that's it, then fine. But if they plan on becoming a Sephora, or if they plan on becoming, you know, Oregon, Washington, California, Arizona chain that everyone knows about in five years, I just think that's detrimental for the feel of our town. I don't think we want to turn into Santa Cruz, or Santa Barbara, or a place, I don't know actually about Santa Barbara. But I know that we have a very, very rustic feel, and I have met many a Bay Area traveler who loves coming to our street to see the little individual shops and to meet the people that own them working there. And there's a couple other things I wanted to bring up, but I don't think I have time, so, you know, as far as safety with building codes, the building that is, that building itself, and the history of that building itself. If anything, I would just love for the sign to stay there, and if Jing is going to run a store there, that it would change its name so that it doesn't look like a recognizable chain that people from the Bay Area already know about. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Adrian.
Yeah.
Now taking public comment from Jen C.
Hi, this is Jennifer. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, so, you know, just on character, I just, it's not coming in enough to this dialogue, but I think you all know, we've had, we've talked about this a lot. This is, this is a historic district that actually was put on a map in 2012 by a local historical advisory committee that no longer exists. But regardless of not having a local ordinance yet, regardless of not being added to the general plan yet, you know, it has been evaluated by a consultant for Friends of Historic Hangtown, you know, in conjunction with, you know, other threats to the historic district. And this historic district is still got enough, you know, enough integrity to be, you know, on the California Register, on the National Register. And it, you know, it has, you know, she identified 37 buildings that still have integrity. This particular building that we're talking about actually must have had primarily, I think, a change, a facade added to it, but that to me means it has this restoration potential. You know, 1856, I guess it had some changes in 1888, but this is Kembellics. I mean, and again, you know, Adrian referred to the sign, and I've written about the sign in my comments, I've written about it on Facebook, even Mark Acuna thought the sign was important. And, you know, definitely, the story of Kembellics and that sign is very important, is part of the character, is part of the uniqueness and the true asset that's going to, in the end, make this a one-of-a-kind place that is not anything you can experience anywhere else in the world. So I just want to say, you know, please, everyone be aware, this is a historic district, this is an incredibly historic location, building, place within the historic district, and consider what's going to go on inside of that. And when people are coming there, are we going to erase this Kembellics part of it? I really hope not. And I just want to say again, so, you know, there's, you know, a number of buildings, you know, like this one, that could be restored because they just have had a facade put on top of it. And in the meantime, we have, you know, all these other buildings, we have a bridge, we have a Druid monument, we have a bell tower, we have all these things that together are really, really special. So I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Taylor, can you? I was wondering if I could have three minutes because I'm speaking for Friends of Historic Hangtown. I had kind of planned a three-minute speech, I didn't know we were going to two minutes. Would that be all right?
But go ahead and make your comments.
Okay. So, you know, in all my years of, you know, 40-plus years living in this county, the city of Placerville is kind of like the hub, it's the heart of the county, the community, and people far and wide that have been here or left or come and go. And there's this enormous people, amount of people that call this their hometown. Never in my life would I imagine that we would be fighting our city council to not allow chain stores in our downtown core. I think that that's kind of what shocks me the most about this whole process. And I think you had the opportunity, after the sourdough, you decided to put the concept out there because there was so much outcry, so much angry. You know, the merchants, the merchants downtown that you represent overwhelmingly have always, you know, they've signed petitions, they did all kinds of things to say, "We don't want this." And so you put this on your agenda, you had your staff do a lot of work in investigating into formula businesses, and the merchants were so burned out by the time this came about, I don't even think they were aware you were doing this. Your meeting that you had to talk about it was in the middle of Christmas season, December 12th. And then at that meeting, you decided that you would, nobody showed up, so you said, "Let's extend this and do a true workshop, get the merchants involved, and we will reconsider it and try to get something done in six months." That should have happened, that would have protected property owners, investors, all kinds of people. Right now, you have a policy that needs to be fixed in order to protect the merchants and the business owners downtown and the people that are looking to coming to our city. This applicant is coming into the heart of our town, it feels like an awkward, I don't know, it's really awkward because the majority of the merchants downtown have signed papers and petitions that they don't want the chain store. And that makes it really awkward in a relationship of where we are so close down there. And, you know, maybe we don't always get along, but we have to live with each other down there. And to come in in an adversarial position because of the way the cities almost set them up to do this, I think it's really sad. And I, my point is that, you know, if we can't get the attention from our city, that maybe we can plead with the applicant to, you would be such a hero if you were to turn around and lease out this building or come up with a business that's not Therapy Store, that's unique to the character of our downtown, that embraces who we are, that wants to reach out to the community that's there and say, "I don't need to be a chain." Because once you create this situation where this property is allowed to be a chain, it doesn't work out, you could sell it, you know, Rite Aid can come in.
Sue, can you wrap up your comments, please?
So I've submitted all these comments in the record. I wish I could have explained them a little bit more, but I am concerned about the colors that she's being allowed. I don't see any mitigation that the city...
Sue, can you wrap up, please?
Yeah, I want you to look at the colors, they're bright orange on the other buildings. If you look at the rest of the record, I would hope that you would look to that. And then I just ask that you deny this conditional use permit, and then maybe we can come back and work with the applicant.
Let me go to the next caller, please, thank you.
Now commenting, Dennis Thomas.
All right, thank you very much. The issue of Walmart was brought up, and my name was brought up in it. And I completely disagree with the characterization that, how they want to compare this store to Walmart. The predatory pricing at the time was really what was at issue. I don't see this being an issue with this, with this story of predatory pricing of coming in and marketing products below their cost to put other people out of business, literally below their cost. It's still going on, I still don't appreciate Walmart, I still don't shop there because of how they treat communities. And you can go across this nation to find communities that don't appreciate the fact that Walmart's there. From my understanding, reading the documents, most of this, most, and I say most because I didn't, I don't know of all of the locations they have, but a significant number of the locations actually expressed their appreciation for this store and for them being in their community and their town and felt that it was an asset. You don't hear that from Walmart from most small stores. We're comparing apples and oranges, I didn't think this needed to be said, but apparently it does. Another reason I've decided to speak out is that I have a business directly next to this location where they proposed their store. They will be in direct competition with me. And you know what? I think a little competition's good for business. I am looking forward to having a vibrant business that is open on a regular basis downtown. There has been this fear that this store will ruin downtown. And I believe, and I'm of the school of thought that they will raise all boats when they come into town. They will bring more people, more people will appreciate it, they'll see the vibrancy of it. I just, I don't feel the same way. I have owned my store for 20 years, I've worked there for 38 years. I've seen stores come and go, and many have competed with me on various issues. And I have learned to pivot, you know, I don't sell as many kids' toys now because of Bonkers Women. I think Bonkers does a great job, we pivot and we do something else. There, I can't tell you how many people have come into town and tried to take over lines that I carry, and some have done a good job of it. And you know what? I change, and I pivot, and I make it work. And I want you to know that I look forward to welcoming them downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Last call for public comment on item 5.2. Now commenting, Dolly.
Hi, Council, Mayor, thank you for hearing this issue. Again, I'm Dolly Wager, and I am representing Lofty Lou's Yarn Shop. We want to speak to the issue of PDA representing all of downtown. No one ever approached us looking with a survey, no one ever talked to us on previous surveys. They took something that one owner said and said that's what the shop said. We do not work that way. We have a management team that reviews anything, everything, and then we go to our general ownership and ask if there's any differing feelings about it. PDA does not represent the Downtown Association anymore. I want that to be real clear. They do not represent downtown. They are not holding regular meetings, they have not had a quorum, I don't believe, in eight months. And it is not fair for them to take the PDA money and hire an attorney when they have not, they are not representing all of downtown. That's the issue that Lofty Lou's would like to speak to. I'd like to take a moment and speak as myself, Dolly Wager, citizen. I realize my time is running out, but now I'm speaking as a citizen, so if I could get about an extra 30 seconds, I would appreciate it. Real clear, I am no longer representing Lofty Lou's. I have worked with, I'm a bookkeeper, I have worked with a lot of people downtown. This unsaid rule of competition, never heard of it, never heard of it. If this, if this store was coming into town, calling, being called Jing Chen Store, and it was not connected to the Therapy Store, there would be no issue. If you haven't looked at this store's website, go look at it. They try and bring in local merchandise, each of the stores look different. This is not a formula chain store. This is a woman who has succeeded and has opened additional stores. I, again, not representing Lofty Lou's, welcome them to town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly.
And I will...
Now taking public comment from 857.
Good evening, Council, and happy new year.
Happy new year.
Okay, so I think the city really, I'm just talking about the process. I think the city really needs to change their ordinances, have some public input and meetings, and really clarify exactly what level of protection we want to apply to our historic downtown district. Looks like there's about, if a chain has more than five stores, we really start to discourage that, not want it. I think we need to really put in the ordinance, any chain stores that have X number of stores are just not allowed in this special district. Because a major problem I have is the CUP running with the land. So if Therapy Stores goes away, McDonald's could buy that property, and that entitlement is already there with that property, and then would really be hard to stop them. And then if that happened, if McDonald's took over a CUP-entitled property, then the neighbor's going to start saying, "Wait, this is an unfair advantage on zoning. How do I get my, you know, permission for chain store zoning?" So I think we need to really quickly tidy up our ordinances and decide exactly what level of protection is correct for this very special district. We're not banning them in the city of Placerville, there's plenty of other real estate out there, but this is a special little space, and it's very little. If the city used taxpayer money to fund an economic study on behalf of the applicant, I would think that was wrong, I hope that didn't happen, I hope the applicant paid for that. So that's all, just, I think we really need to clean up the language on the law, so going forward, everyone knows exactly what's allowed and what isn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Now commenting, Kathy.
Good evening, this is Kathy Lishman. I agree with the last speaker that I think something needs to be done, and soon. This is the second formula business application in the downtown in the recent past. And I'm thinking, what's next? What will be the next request that we can't have any input on or deny? And so I think downtown is so special that the staff and the council needs to take the time to really address this issue. I feel like your hands are tied, and I don't like that idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Last call for public comment on item 5.2. Last call for public comment on item 5.2.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to the council. I think I see Jing there with her hand raised. I don't know if he wanted to make another comment or not, but again, like I did on the last one, we'd have three minutes both for the appellant and for the applicant. So actually, I'll go to the appellate first. You'll have three minutes if you want to make any other comments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just want to address a couple of the caller's issues about the PDA. The PDA is a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization. It's a membership organization. The membership has been misunderstood for as long as I have been involved with it. And a major part of what we were doing last year was trying to bring form to our membership. Much like the Eldorado Winery Association and the Apple Hill Growers Association and even the Chamber of Commerce, you have to opt in to be a member. You're not a member by virtue of your address. Last year, we had 39 members. Those are people who simply took the time to fill out a one-page application, giving us basically their contact information. There was no fee attached and we ended up with 39 members. We did represent those 39 members. The people who are calling in and telling you that they weren't represented or consulted were people who didn't bother to fill out that one-page application and join the member organization. So I just want to clear that part up. And I think that that's all I really had. I'll keep it brief. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Patrick?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Thank you. And then just a very, very fine point here. Again, Dr. King in his report emphasizes, he actually says this quote, "I'd also like to emphasize that this is not simply a matter of encouraging competition. It's about unfair competition, unequal competition." So with that, we submit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Chen, did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
Well, I just want to ask how many merchants actually worked on New Christmas Eve until 7:30 last year? If you, I'm not going to apologize for having 11 locations because I was working until 7:45 on December 24th. So if you're afraid of me coming to town and, you know, to your customers, then we just kind of need to reflect and see what we can do better. I'm here to serve the public. I'm here to serve the community. And I think if we can continue to do that and just like Danny said, continue to change and adopt, we will be able to thrive together. It could be win-win. I don't think we need to let fear win. I think there's just a lot of fears. And in order to community, I have been, there's no one gone out of business because of us. So just, we just all need to work hard and serve the public. And that's what we're supposed to do in retail. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close comments from both the appellant and applicant and bring it to the city council for discussion. We've also closed public comments. So any comments or questions from colleague, yes, Ms. Taylor? You're mute.
Okay, I have a question for either Pierre or John Driscoll. There's, people are talking about the formula business as if the formula business is the use, but the use is retail and the formula business is just a type of business. That's how I've been understanding it. Is that, am I on the right track there?
That is correct. Use is a use allowed by right. And we have a definition of what a formula business is so that the city has discretion over that type of business. And it's true, Mr. Slurry, it stated that you do have the ability to deny it, but you have to, that would be based on findings that it's going to be detrimental to the Main Street. Staff is unaware of any, anything where we see that it would be detrimental to the downtown. It would be arbitrary and capricious just to deny it just based on the fact that it's a formula business.
Okay, and then one more question. Several times it came up during comment that by allowing this CUP to go through, it would stay with the parcel and it could be transferred to McDonald's or Gap or something like that. But my understanding was that, you know, the conditional use permit is really about the aesthetics on the outside. So should another chain store want to come in in their place, they would still need to go through this process.
That is true, and that was a false statement. And I think we've heard it several times from two different speakers. Section 10-4-9(c)(10) basically would require that if a different formula business were to move into that spot, you're saying McDonald's wanted to move in there. McDonald's couldn't piggyback on the conditional use permit for therapy stores. It'd be a different formula business. It would require its owner amendment to the original CUP and site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Any other questions for staff? Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Borelli.
I would like to say that I do find it rather amusing that they would bring up my late husband and appeal to my vote in his name, which is a zillion years ago. I'm not sure that he would feel that way right now. I will say this, that when we did have a restaurant business downtown, that we got a call from one of the restaurants in town saying they were having a special meeting and that he needed to attend. And he asked what the meeting was about and they informed him that Denny's was coming to town and we needed to keep them out. And he objected and would not attend the meeting and said, wait, it's all about competition. Denny's did come to town. They were, were Mel's, or Buttercup is now. And they left. They went down to Placerville Drive. And we've had a lot of other chain stores. We had Leatherbees here. We had Starbucks. We've had a lot of chain stores come in and they left. This is not a detriment to Placerville. And I just think, I still feel as though competition does not hurt anyone.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember No?
Yeah, I looked really hard through the appeals points and to find them actually proving the points. And they had 11 examples with 11 different stores to show me blight, to show me urban decay. And I didn't see any of those. In fact, with all the letters, I saw just the opposite. That it has brought a lot to the different areas that it was to. So I'm really struggling with that, you know, with regards to formula stores. I want to remind everybody that we did attempt to bring this up last fall. There was a peak meeting. There was a planning commission meeting in October. There was a city council meeting on December 10th and nobody said boo. There was not a letter, a call or anything from the PDA. It was like nobody cared. And so, you know, the city has tried to be diligent and have this conversation. I want to make sure everybody realizes that, that we tried to have this conversation and nobody showed up. Nobody wanted to have it. The PDA was informed at their PDA meeting and they still didn't show up. So it's not like this is a new thing all of a sudden, ah, ah, you know. It's been attempted to be, been discussed. I just, based on the points of the appeal, I can't find any evidence that supports those claims. That's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Borelli?
You know, one thing I forgot to say, it was, it's kind of ironic that they're keep commenting on the name of Kembelix and kind of, you know, insinuating that it's ruining an old name and et cetera. But in one of the papers, it was one of the smaller papers that we have, local papers, there was a picture of Gail Kembelik Roll who sold that building to Ms. Chen and welcoming them into Placerville. So I just wanted to comment on that. I thought that was pretty, you know, important.
I'm glad you brought it up, Patty. I was actually going to bring that up myself. That, you know, lost in this discussion is the fact that the Kembelik family, you know, after over 100 years of service and really a mainstay of our town, chose Ms. Chen and her family to sell it to. I don't think Gail would have sold it to somebody that she thought was going to destroy the fabric or take away from the uniqueness of Main Street. And so, you know, let's look at that as well and just in terms of, and like you said, you know, Gail was in a couple, I think, advertisements welcoming the therapy store into town. You know, we don't live in Placerville in a command economy, meaning we don't have government tell us, you know, what people can sell, what they can, where they can end up opening their business within some confines. And it's almost, you know, from folks that are very conservative to say that we should limit business, we should limit competition and that government should dictate what could come in here when the rules clearly allow for this type of business. This doesn't sit with me as an argument that would say that this store shouldn't be allowed into town. Competition is vital in the fact that we had a business owner, in this case, Dennis Thomas, our colleague, saying, hey, I'm right next door, but, you know, I'll step up my game and, you know, I'll welcome the competition to town. And I think that's really the American spirit is having that. You know, if this council should want to have a conversation later about these types of businesses, formula, then we can do that. But that's certainly not what's, certainly not the rules that are in place today. And again, as Pierre mentioned, you know, McDonald's couldn't piggyback on, if she wanted to sell it, piggyback on that. And so just like we were on, you know, the, I think the first item tonight, you know, just trying to bring some consistency to all of our deliberations. Again, I don't see where we would deny this CUP for Ms. Chen. Yes, Councilmember Taylor?
I've got a couple of comments. I don't want to be dismissive of the concerns of the merchants. Business is not for the faint of heart and especially this year. And one commenter mentioned, you know, the wildfires and the smoke and on top of COVID. It's been a really hard year and I acknowledge that there's just a lot of fear and anxiety going on right now with the new business coming in. I'm also sympathetic to the idea of having an area that is, you know, reserved for only small businesses. I grew up in a small historic town that did not allow chain restaurants in, and I liked that about my town. I think we need to have that conversation. I think there's pros and cons to that. And it will be an interesting debate, but I think we should have that conversation. But in terms of, you know, whether or not a formula business is allowed, if you read the ordinance, they clearly are. And if the community as a whole doesn't like that, then it's something that we need to update. But we can't just enforce ordinances kind of arbitrarily. And, you know, on whether the therapy store will compete with the other businesses, I thought that the report by ALH was really well done. It went to great lengths about what products were going to be offered and the degree that it would actually have any effect on any business. I would highly recommend all of the merchants that are concerned about this to read it. You might find that it puts your mind at ease a little bit. The study really showed that these businesses are already competing with each other and that they've been remarkably resilient through all of this, which I thought was, it was a great point to see. You know, and then on whether this will make some businesses close, you know, the city's duty is to create a fair playing field with our ordinances and then to enforce them evenly. We are, we are not here to micromanage the landscape of individual businesses and how they interact with each other and which property owners can sell their property to which businesses. So that's kind of, that's where I'm landing on this. And then just, just one more thing, you know, the PDA, your mission statement is to, is that the PDA serves to enhance and promote businesses on Main Street through special events and activities that attract visitors to the historic downtown district. The businesses are really going to need that going forward. It saddens me to see the PDA spending their money and their time trying to keep businesses out of town. We need to bring businesses in. Everyone's going to need to work together to attract visitors and be successful. So it saddens me to see that. I hope going forward, there can be more collaboration and that the PDA really focuses on their mission statement. That's all my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Okay, do we have a, does anyone want to entertain a motion? Councilmember Borelli?
I would like to entertain a motion that we affirm the decision of the planning commission approving CUP 20-04 and SPR 20-04 to allow a formula business at 339 Main Street based on the findings made by the planning commission denying the appeal filed by the Placerville Downtown Association and Friends of Historic Hangtown.
A second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further comments from council members? Okay, seeing none. Yes, Mr. Morris?
Here, I don't know. Pierre was going to pipe up. There was an additional-
Is there?
That's right.
A comment or finding, I think that Pierre wanted added that's on the bottom. Councilmember Borelli, if you'd like to add that, I just, it's up to you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. I want to make sure then that that motion includes the full recommendation contained within the staff report. So the recommendation was, as Councilmember Borelli read, and then there was the further, that staff further recommends that the council make the following finding, modifying the secret finding, roman numeral 2e, made by the planning commission as follows. And it's there on your staff report. We have underlined the addition that we made to that finding. I'm happy to read it in the record if you like.
Well, I'm in my emotion to include that.
Councilmember Taylor, you would still second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Yeah, I think, I just wanted to add one more comment. And I think Councilmember Taylor touched on this a little bit is, you know, my guess is most people, if they had the opportunity to sell their building for, you know, a certain price, they probably wouldn't want any restrictions on who they could sell that business to as well. It's always convenient to have that to say when it's not your own. But if we were to limit other people's ability to sell to somebody, I think people will probably have a difference of opinion on this current issue. So anyways, with that, we have a first and a second. Seeing no further comments, I'm going to go ahead and ask for roll call.
Mayor Saren Gosa?
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli?
Hi.
Councilmember No?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hey, great. That measure passes unanimously. That is our last action item for this evening. We do have, because, congratulations, Ms. Chen. Because we knew this was going to be a long meeting, we did split this up. So tomorrow, we will have what would be our normal city council meeting at a regular time at 6 o'clock. So thank you, everybody that's joined us today. We'll see probably some of you back again tomorrow. And again, thank you colleagues as well as staff. And again, thank you, colleagues, as well as staff, for all the work on both, because I know this took a lot of time. Yes, I'll let, go ahead, Ms. Chen, I'll let you say a few words.
I promise I'm going to make you guys proud. I won't fail you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We believe you. Okay, so with that, at 7:07, I will adjourn tonight's meeting of the Placerville City Council. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Hey, everyone.